Good evening. My name is Jackie Gylfus and I am your acting chair for this evening. I will be serving as chair. We're going to start with an update from Tingsboro Media. This meeting is going to be recorded and broadcasted on Tingsboro Media. The meeting will be available on our local cable access channels, on Comcast and Verizon FiOS, and as a livestream on our website at tingsboroma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare so now. Seeing none. After instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room, as well as one to my left. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone who is willing and able to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. I'm going to start with board introductions. If I can start from my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnackert, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Adelle Cofflin.
Good evening, Ron Cohen.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Colin Noizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Sean Walsh, Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. And again, I'm Jackie Gylfus. I am the acting chair for this evening because Chair Schneider is not available. I'm going to start with meeting minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion on our meeting minutes from last session.
Yes, I move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for September 8, 2025.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstained? So that carries 3-0-1. And I go forward.
I move that we approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for September 8, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you. That carries 3-0-1. Okay. So this is the portion of the meeting for citizen and business time. I know that many of the comments today are in regards to comments that I made on social media, and so in the interest of being fair and impartial, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this portion as chair, and I'm going to ask the clerk to serve as chairman pro tem. Is there any objection from the board to do that?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to hand this over here. The only other thing that I'll make note, and Eric is going to talk about this, is we're not allowed to respond after citizens' comments. So I'm not going to respond immediately here, but I do have a statement that I'll share during select board reports, so folks can stay for that portion, or you can catch it later on demand. That's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You're chair.
Okay. So as discussed, the next item on the agenda is citizen business time. As many of you are probably aware, the Select Board has a pre-existing policy that covers citizen and business time that limits the total amount of time to 15 minutes as printed on the agenda. The agenda also notes, however, that this can be amended at the discretion of the chair. So we know that quite a few of you are here to speak tonight, and that the topic is an emotional and a raw one. To be respectful of the community, we will dispense with the overall time limit for citizen and business time and will allow anyone in the room who wants to speak to be heard. To make that happen, we will put in the following parameters. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes and will only be addressing the board at one time. So one time through. I will be strictly enforcing this to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard equally and fairly. A time on the screen will serve as the visual reminder, and I will give everyone a 30-second warning by lifting my hand. Don't be offended by it, I'm just giving you a heads up. I ask that you please respect the other speakers in the room and adhere to the two-minute limit. We will be imposing this fairly across the board. No one can yield their time to another speaker to increase their time to more than two minutes. All comments are to be made to the Select Board through the chair, myself. There will be no back and forth between members of the audience, and I ask that you please refrain from using your time to berate or belittle speakers before you. Please do not interrupt or shout down other speakers. Everyone will have a chance to be heard, so please treat each other, each speaker, as you would expect to be treated yourselves. I am confident that we'll be able to get through this respectfully and without any disruption. However, in the event that the meeting becomes unruly, I will call for the meeting to temporarily recess or possibly adjourn as opposed to asking individuals to leave. We are a small town. We know each other very well. I hope that we can work together to make sure that everyone's voice is heard and respected. Finally, as mentioned, the Select Board is not permitted at all to deliberate items that are not on the agenda in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. Citizen and business time is an opportunity for the community to address the board, not the other way around. There will be no response from the board this evening. As you can see, we do not have a full board. The board will take any comments today under advisement, and should it warrant a deliberation by the board, it will be posted as an agenda item on a future Select Board agenda as required by law. Before we open up the microphone, I want to note that the board received multiple written comments with instructions to include them in the public record. Those letters are included in the board's correspondence, which is posted online and incorporated into the record as such. As a reminder, we're going to go through, and I'm going to open it up, and whoever wants to speak first will come up. Before we do that, remember, everybody's going to get a chance to speak, so don't feel like you have to rush other than two minutes. But please start with your name and address, and then at that point in time, the two minutes will start. Okay?
Mr. Selectman, I would like to start if I could and address the board.
Please come to the microphone up here and start. Ah, no, behind you, I'm sorry. We have a full house, so for the folks out there.
All right. So thank you very much for having me speak. I am Scott Madison of 29 Washington Street, lived in Tingsboro 25 years. I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend, Maura Amrich, who was not able to be here tonight, but she wanted these words read into the record. Maura says, "I have been a key organizer of peaceful protests at the bridge every other Saturday since March as a co-leader of Tingsboro Indivisible. Clearly, I support someone's right to free speech. As a longtime resident of Tingsboro, I am deeply concerned with taking away these rights from our elected or appointed officials, especially when stated on someone's personal Facebook page. I fully support having a code of conduct for those who serve the town. Hate speech, attacking a town official or resident, claiming to speak for an entire board is not appropriate, even on a private page." What Jackie posted did not do any of that. It did not violate our code of conduct. "We have difficulty enough with finding people to serve the town. I do not, as a resident of Tingsboro, support such a restriction on one's free speech that could discourage even more people from serving the town. In addition, it is difficult for me to see many of the same people here calling for Jackie to be removed while posting hateful comments to the Tingsboro Republican Town Committee and Tingsboro Talk page. Comments made to Jackie's candidate page are cruel and intolerant. The right to free speech should be supported by all and for all. Thank you for this time." Maura J. Amrich. I know, 30 seconds. Speaking for myself, I would simply say, "I grew up believing in the Bill of Rights. I was taught everyone has a right to free speech. I appreciate the right of people to disagree with me. I would never criticize them for that. I myself may not agree with everything President Trump does, but I am perfectly happy with people telling me that they disagree with my views. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Scott Madison."
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Sir?
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. "God is good. Jesus loves us all. Freedom of speech in America is a protected right. Jackie Gylfus's Facebook post did not yell 'fire' in a theater. So some may say, no harm, no foul. At least in part, the Facebook post did expose Select Board Gylfus's feelings about the murder and assassination of Charlie Kirk. There was a screenshot of the post showing it had been up for nine hours, and there were 27 likes. Several others agreed with the disdain contained in the Facebook post. Jackie Gylfus appeared to be distraught and could not imagine that many others loved a conservative Christian named Charlie Kirk. Select Board members are the highest-ranking town officials. Can a person who is easily overwhelmed because of deep-seated predetermined inclinations make responsible decisions for all Tingsboro residents? Maybe or maybe not. I've verified that there is not a town bylaw that can get a town official out. However, I suspect that a silent majority of Tingsboro residents will have no confidence in Select Board Member Gylfus's future decisions. Remaining in office until the election in May of 2027 may be detrimental to our community and uncomfortable for Jackie Gylfus. In my opinion, resignation from public office would be the best thing for Jackie and our community as a whole." Thank you. One statement, "You don't need to make platitudes about Charlie Kirk. Just Google to see a conservative shill he was. He was literally in the middle of spreading transphobic and racist rhetoric about gun violence when he was shot. That ended his free speech."
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Mr. Murphy? Take your time.
One quick note. So the TRTC post, the message, that's included in the notes, and people can see that themselves.
In the correspondence, it is posted there with our...
So I'm going to start. My name's John Murphy, 61 Ting Road. I've known Jackie since serving together on the 250 Middlesex Committee a few years ago. While people might have preconceived notions about how conservatives and trans persons are supposed to interact, we became friendly, respectful, respected of our differences, and appreciated many of the things we had in common, including thoughtful and analytical decision-making. It's painful for me to call for Jackie's resignation. However, the words and tone of Jackie's Facebook post regarding Charlie Kirk were beyond the pale. Statements suggesting that Charlie deserved no sympathy because he was a conservative shill or that he condoned his own murder are dangerous and unacceptable, especially from a sitting board member. These statements directly violate the Tingsboro Code of Conduct. Saying he did nothing but incite violence, weaponize Christianity, and made the world a worse place violates Section 3. Language is inflammatory and disrespectful. Calling Charlie Kirk a conservative shill is a personal insult which violates Section 3.1 DE and G, undermining public confidence. Saying he was literally in the middle of spreading transphobic and racist rhetoric about gun violence when he was shot violates Section 3.1 DJ. Frames a violent death in the way that minimizes it and conflicts with any harassment and anti-discrimination responsibilities. Intimidating that he condoned his own murder violates Section 3 and 32B by being abusive, demeaning, and undermining public confidence in local government. Charlie Kirk did not incite violence, nor did he condone harm to himself or others. He encouraged civil debate, welcomed opposing voices, and stood by his beliefs without spreading hate. Defending the Second Amendment, criticizing DEI policies, or acknowledging biological sex are not acts of racism, bigotry, or violence, they're legitimate points of discussion. Silence or inaction in response to these posts would signal tacit approval of the rhetoric that's disrespectful, inflammatory, and dangerous. I call on Jackie to resign immediately."
Thank you. You've gone past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead, please, and then...
Don Garnon, 19 Norah King Road. "I don't know you, Jackie. I've never met Jackie. I don't know anything about you. I'll make this as brief as I can. Charlie Kirk's right to free speech was taken away from him when he was murdered. He was murdered because of his intolerance, because of intolerance over his passions and his personal beliefs. It is my opinion he did not make the world a worse place by his words and action. Instead, he challenged and inspired youths to discuss and debate the differences as to try and move America forward. As they say, words matter, and the words Jackie chose are a prime example of what is wrong with this country. If Jackie's post is what was thought of him just after he was murdered, I can't imagine what would be thought of someone sitting here that was just like him. I am Charlie Kirk."
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Rao. I live at 16 Machine Road. I decided to speak today because according to our code of conduct, Jackie has the right to their own opinion about a public personality and can share that opinion as long as they are not claiming to say it in an official capacity as someone on our Select Board or in a way that encourages violence. Their post did not, their personal post did not in any way say they approved of or encouraged the murder of Charlie Kirk or any violence towards him or his followers. It's quite possible that, like many of us, Jackie saw a lot of people posting about Mr. Kirk's positive qualities, so they encouraged people to do their research to see that he was a bad person in their opinion. They were not making fun of a dead man or his death. They were pointing out some reasons they did not like that man. Also, please be assured to address Jackie by name if you are not willing to use their preferred pronouns, they/them, because online people have been using she/her, or some, to be cruel, are using it. Similarly, you can call them a person, not woman, or lady, or worse that we have seen online. In summary, I do not think Jackie broke any rules in the code of conduct, and I think they have been treated horribly."
Thank you. Hold up. Thank you. Please, sir. We'll get to everybody, I promise.
Constantinos Calobos, 29 Virginia Road. "Let's be honest here. Punishing our select person for their views on social media is not about enforcing the code of conduct. It's about silence and someone for thinking differently. It's intimidation and hypocrisy. I often disagree with the majority of the positions by Republican Town Committee advocates, but I do not seek to silence them because free speech means protecting the right to speak, especially when we don't agree. We've all heard our current leaders use language that dehumanizes and normalizes cruelty. They shape how we treat each other, and in this community, how we talk to each other, and whether we see one another as neighbors or enemies. Violence and cruelty should not be condemned no matter the politics, but do we believe our current administration will show the city of humanity if Biden or anybody else wants to get hurt as they demand it from figures like Charlie Kirk? When it comes to Charlie Kirk, in my opinion, he's a racist and a bigot. He claimed we made a mistake passing the Civil Rights Act. Think about that. The law that entered 2.0, where black people could be arrested, thrown in jail without due process, even lynched, he thought that was okay. He excused the attack by Bob Lewski, saying some patriot should bail out the attacker. He was an antisemite. Our select person, by contrast, spoke out against this kind of rhetoric. To punish them under the code of conduct is not fairness, it's selective enforcement, it's hypocrisy. Let's meet in town and choose a stability, not such a ship, a principle over prejudice. Let's defend free speech, and even when it challenges us. Thank you."
Thank you. Yes, please.
I didn't write my end of term, so...
That's okay. We will be sticking to two minutes, no matter what.
Amity Baldwin, 8 Old Kendall Road. "I came here tonight after being made aware of what was happening. I'm actually not in the Tingsboro Talk Facebook group. I left it a long time ago because there was so much hatred in it, and there was so much attacking of our fellow citizens. I didn't feel it was representative of Tingsboro, and it was uncomfortable to be there. But I did go back and I read through all of the rhetoric that had been put in there over the last couple of days regarding this issue, and I chose to come here tonight in support of Jackie. I feel that everybody in town has opinions. Everybody is entitled to express their opinions. The code of conduct was not broken because it was not expressed as a representative opinion of our Select Board. It was a personal opinion, and that's all we're talking about here. Some people have the opinion that Charlie Kirk was a great man, and some people have the opinion that he had flaws. And we are allowed to have those opinions, and we are allowed to express those opinions. There was nothing in what was expressed that called for cruelty or celebrated his death. There was nothing like that in there. There was no call for hatred. However, the responses to Jackie by private citizens have been very hateful. The things that have been said in response on her page, on their page, were cruel and awful and way worse than anything that Jackie had said. And I personally, I understand that those people may not represent our Select Board, but they have opinions, Jackie had opinions, and it's all about opinions, and we are allowed to express them in a free country. Thank you."
Thank you. Someone from the back. Yeah, I can see a hand. Come on up. That's all I could see was hands.
Ashley Webster, 91 Riley Road, "Making a statement on behalf of myself and my cousin at the same address, Leah Alaby. One of the big issues that I see in our country right now is a lack of understanding nuance. When I was younger, I saw the world black or white, right or wrong, and I grew up to see that there's way more shades of gray than that. So I've learned to look at both sides and discern the truth. In my role as the director of the largest department in my facility, it makes me a fair and understanding boss. Tonight, it makes me stand with Jackie. Looking at their posts and the posts of others in response, I don't see where Jackie needs to step down. Whether I look at the Constitution, the town bylaws, the town code of conduct, the Bible's instructions to leaders, or my own moral code, I don't see any crime that they are guilty of. The First Amendment extends to those in elected or appointed positions, as well as to regular citizens. Of course, there's no escape from consequences for anyone, but hate speech is more than speech that you just hate. No one is harmed, threatened, or attacked by Jackie's statements, which is untrue of some of the comments they have been on the receiving end of this week. As a result, the only consequence I can see for posting a personal opinion on a personal page should be for those who disagree with them to vote for somebody else in the next election. If we can't be civil with disagreements in our own small town, how can we hold the larger government to account for their actions? Differences of opinion and outlook are the only way society grows and adapts and improves. A difference of opinions certainly does not mean that Jackie or any leader is automatically unable to make fair decisions. Jackie, please continue doing the good work that you do. Love your bowtie. Selectmen and Board, thank you for your time."
Thank you. I saw another hand from the back.
Hi, my name's Christine Smith. In all fairness on social media, I go by Cricket. First and foremost, I want to apologize for using the wrong pronouns. I wasn't aware. My bad. I also want to apologize for the people that personally attacked you. This is not a personal thing. My point is we can't fight eight with hate. So my objection to the post was, he was less than, so he deserved what he got. Well, I have two trans people in my family that I love very much, and they were thought of as less than, and those comments hurt, and those comments cause consequences, and there are consequences to thinking people are less than. I think Charlie Kirk... I don't want to express how I feel about Charlie Kirk. It's not about that. We need to meet together with kindness, and dismissing someone because of how they feel or who they are or how they identify, it's all wrong. No matter who it is, no matter what their opinion. So why he was less than, I can understand the emotional part of it. You can argue a man's ideals, you cannot argue his humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff Boe, 33 Virginia Road. "I'm here tonight to call for the resignation of the Select Board Member Jackie Gylfus. This is not about politics. This is not about free speech. It's about accountability and consequences. After the assassination of Charlie Kirk, Ms. Gylfus mocked condolences, attacked his faith, and implied his murder was justified because of his views. In essence, she rationalized the actions of an assassin. This is unacceptable for anyone in public office. There is precedent across this country. Officials have lost their positions for similar remarks. A school resource officer in New York was removed for comments excusing Kirk's killer. The University of Arkansas law professor was suspended for mocking mourners. A Tennessee university employee was fired for their calais posts. Even a Missouri state senator lost her committee assignments for suggesting violence against President Trump. The standard is clear: when leaders excuse violence, they forfeit their right to serve. How are parents, teachers, and students supposed to feel safe in a town when a town leader minimizes their very violence schools fear most? How can our faith communities feel respected when their belief is demeaned by their own representatives? This is not about silencing an opinion. This is about holding an elected official to the standard of dignity, empathy, integrity that this office demands. I'm calling on the board to act tonight. Failure to do so is a dangerous message. That political violence, it can be excused, that cruelty is tolerated, and that Tingsboro's leaders will look the other way. That cannot be who we are. Jackie Gylfus must resign tonight. Tingsboro deserves better."
You can, you can go. He'll go, and then you can go next.
So he can hear me a little more clearly. Dan McDonald, 29 Shakespeare Street. "I read Jackie's posts. I saw no condoning of violence. I saw mention of Christianity and religion only in the context of vile statements that you can find with a simple internet search. I found this horrible 10-minute speech from Charlie Kirk, and we won't talk more about that, but I will say I see no examples of that in anything Jackie has done, never mind with any attachment to government authority or their position on this board. I really, really believe that these posts that have been put up were sought out by people targeting Jackie for their views, for who they are, and people talk about hate and belittling and othering and finding people less than human. I've seen some of those replies. If you want to see examples of that, go look at those people. Really. And I am glad you're on the Select Board. I look forward to electing you again in May 2027. And when I say good job to my, you know, but kids I know, it's add a boy for men, add a girl for women, and I have my own non-binary child, and for you, Jackie, I say add an NB. Thank you very much."
Thank you.
Hike Peterman, 42 Lawndale. "I'm an immigrant. I'm a naturalized citizen. Originally, I'm from Germany. Let's not pretend this is about what Jackie posted on their private Facebook page. It's about who they are, and I saw some of the nasty messages they got." page. It's about who they are. And I saw some of the nasty messages they got. I want to share a poem by Martin Niemerler. First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Teresa O'Keefe. I live at 65 Alpine Way. I think public officials are held to a higher standard. Public officials need to be careful when they share their views, especially when these views can be seen as offensive. You should be working to bring people together. I think it's concerning when a personal post presents a one-sided view and has a reaction that divides the town instead of bringing us all together. It makes me question, Jackie, and I'm sorry, but are you capable of representing all of the citizens of our town? When making decisions, you have to see more than one side.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, come on up.
Valma Riley, 18 Pataca Boulevard. Everybody has a right to their opinion and what they think. But I think that we hold you selectmen as leaders. And when something negative is put on Facebook, like it was, our children read it, our grandchildren read it, and they're confused. This is a time in the United States when there's a lot of confusion and a lot of hate. And to put something like that on, it offends me and other Christians. It offends people that believe in what Charlie was saying. And I just think that as a representative of our town and the people, you need to think before you put something on. And once you did, and you saw the reaction, just a simple, you know, I'm sorry, those are my private thoughts. I shouldn't have put them on, would have been wonderful. It would have made a difference tonight. But it wasn't done that way. And so I think that the best thing is just to eliminate the problem. And tonight, I'm sorry, Jackie, you have become the problem, and a lot of people just don't have the faith anymore in you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, come on up. And if you have your hand up, I'm short. So have the hand up so I can see.
Hello, Tracy Leiberg, 42 Lawndale. We don't dictate to Americans how, if, or who they grieve, not for a loved one or after a horrific event. Shock is complicated, and Jackie's personal post offered grace and information to people wrestling with complex emotions after a trauma. Faith leaders and mental health experts have reminded us that it's natural to feel confusion and curiosity about this man, fear, and yes, even relief all at once. It's a human experience. Politics and religion should never be used to incite violence, and wrapping ideology in scripture doesn't make it right, or heroic, or holy. Mr. Kirk didn't deserve to die for doing his job. Jackie has been sent vile, dehumanizing attacks, being called a thing, it, a scumbag, slurs against their wife in appearance. Is that what we've represented as a community? Mr. Kirk had a job for Turning Point USA, and he was amplifying messages that called our LGBTQ neighbors a social contagion, abominations, degraded women, saying that we were responsible for the fertility collapse in the West. We don't require any victims of that abuse to stay silent, to capitulate, or to lionize the abusers. Honesty isn't celebrating. It's compassion and integrity, and Jackie doesn't just carry their own story. We have a right to say no to the vitriol and bigotry cosplaying as righteousness. Elected leaders have the right to stand up and to speak for the dignity of all of our neighbors and children in this town. Those are values we need more of in leadership. I mean, really, this accusation that Jackie's empathy and principles disqualify them is absurd, and it's embarrassing. We have a direct democracy. Jackie was duly elected and remains qualified, experienced, and more than capable of serving. So Jackie, in very good conscience and unapologetically, I support you. Do not resign.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Diana Cohane, 15 Chard Road. Well, here we go again. A small group of residents is trying to vilify one of our elected leaders. In fact, the majority of this current board has had to endure calls for their resignation. When will this stop? For the past three elections, the position of select person has gone unopposed. It is no wonder. Why would anyone want to endure the constant unwarranted attacks that come with giving your time to this town? Jackie, I am sorry that you are their latest target. I have reread the code of conduct several times. When you expressed your personal feelings about the response to someone whose words had hurt you personally, you did not condone or promote violence or harassment toward anyone, let alone any member of this community. You did not violate our code of conduct. And may I point out that less than one-half of 1% of the members of Tingsborough Talk liked the most recent post asking for people to come and speak out against you. It is a small minority. Clearly, serving a select person is a thankless job. I want to thank you and every board member for continuing to give your time on behalf of all of us, making the tough decisions, and continuing to make Tingsborough a better town for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Mason, 7 Helena Drive. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to address the motion to remove vice chair based on the personal social media comments regarding Charlie Kirk's death. The First Amendment guarantees us the right to free speech. While that doesn't free us from consequences, there must be clear standards and consistency. In my interpretation, the code of conduct that several anonymous commenters and participants tonight have referenced was in no way violated. Where do we draw the line on what is or isn't acceptable in our private discussions? As someone who has served on town committees, I know these are often thankless positions filled with people committed to supporting their community. Removing the vice chair based on the personal interpretations of this post sets a dangerous precedent that undermines personal freedoms, discourages civic participation, and distracts us from the real work of improving services in our town. I urge this board to dismiss this motion and stand firm in defending both our constitutional rights and the integrity of this community we're a part of. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Tower Hodgkins, 40 Lawndale Road. This is more of a personal thing for me. It's not a, any other thing. We need leaders who see every member of our community, not just the loudest voices of certain beliefs, everyone. People with disabilities are often overlooked, and real accessibility is an afterthought in planning and policy. Elected representatives who advocate for people with disabilities are not just protecting vulnerable neighbors. It's working to build a community where everyone is valued and invited. Inclusion strengthens democracy and policies shaped by empathy and dignity, serves everyone. Jackie is the, this really, it's very personal to me. Jackie is the only select member who sought me out to learn about our experiences as a family with people with disabilities, to ask about accessibilities and barriers in our town. Jackie let me know that everyone in my family is a priority for them. That's the kind of leadership we need. Equality, compassion, and advocacy are important. Attempting to vilify, bully, shame, and force out one of the best examples for our community is both irresponsible and just trying to silence people you disagree with. There are, there are a couple of people in this room who have, I'm sure there are several people in this room who have a difference of opinion from anything that I think, regardless of what it is. Even first responders. If I, I don't ever feel like if I had to call 911 because my house was on fire, that a Democrat or Republican firefighter is going to choose whether or not they put my house out. And I consider these people my friends. Our kids play sports together. And, you know, that's, that's the parameter of that relationship, and that's okay.
Thank you. Yes, come on up. Oh, you can go next. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, come on up.
Good evening. Vincent Malito, 40 Lawndale Road. I'm here, I don't have anything prepared. I'll be totally honest. I don't even have Facebook. I try to steer away from all of that stuff. This was all stuff that was brought to my attention, and I'm here actually to support Jackie. I've met her before a couple of times. But in all honesty, as far as having select persons, I would rather have somebody with an opinion, regardless of whether or I agree with the opinion or not, rather than have some mindless automaton panel that's going to kowtow to whatever everybody says or thinks. Otherwise, I might as well clone myself and vote for me. It's that kind of critical thinking that encourages other people to stop and think about things, okay? Sometimes people might be thinking about something wrong. Sometimes you might be thinking about something wrong where I have a different opinion. It works both ways. But the only way to encourage free thought is to have a difference in opinion. And the only way to encourage that opinion is to give everybody that freedom of speech. I don't think there was anything wrong with you posting it on your personal page because it's not like you were throwing up banners and saying, hey, everybody, look over here. Look what I'm posting. It was all free to do. And I think that everybody's entitled to their opinion outside the office. As long as you don't bring it inside the office, you keep it at the doorstep, then that's fine. But it still is necessary for everybody to have that freedom of speech. I don't know anything really about Charlie Kirk, okay? He knows some things and says some things that I don't agree with, but he was still entitled to his opinion, okay? And he was, he was assassinated because of that, okay? Everybody thought it was wrong, okay? So don't do the same thing to someone else for having an opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Yeah, please. Y'all are doing fantastic, by the way.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Mulroy. I live at 88 Farwell Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Forcing Jackie's resignation is a violation of free speech and the First Amendment. The First Amendment in the U.S. Constitution protects the right to free speech, including the expression of personal opinions, even if they may be controversial or uncomfortable for some. It's crucial that we uphold these rights, especially for public officials, to maintain a healthy democracy. There is and should continue to be a clear distinction between personal and professional conduct. It's important to recognize the difference between a board member's official duties and their private expression. Personal opinions shared on a private platform don't necessarily reflect the official stance of the board, and I think we all know that. If we look at Jackie's record in their professional setting, and they are serving to the best of their ability without harm, I see no reason their personal beliefs should interfere. We are all required to compartmentalize and to leave some piece of us at home while we are at work, but not while we're at home. If we force them to resign, this would be a chilling, a chilling effect on free expression. If we begin to police personal opinions, it could set a dangerous precedent and create a chilling effect discouraging open dialogue and stifling diverse viewpoints within our community, which is the foundation of a productive democracy. This could potentially set a precedent on the future of civil discourse. We should encourage respectful and civil discourse, as we're doing today, even when opinions differ. In my opinion, the content of their posts was not disrespectful nor extreme. Demanding resignation over a personal viewpoint can undermine the democratic values that allow for diverse opinions. While we may not always agree with each other's perspectives, it's vital that we protect the right to free speech. I urge the board to consider the importance of this principle and to foster an environment where differing opinions can coexist without fear of retribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
81 Willowdale Road, Amanda McLean. I'd like to thank the select board for their service to our town and also everyone else who comes out to make these kinds of meetings run. It's a lot of work, which is partially why so many of the positions ran uncontested every year. The idea that people who are serving on the select board should adhere to a complete no opinion, no controversial post, nothing that would make anyone uncomfortable on their private pages, isn't just ridiculous. It's also a violation of their, everyone, all the select boards, First Amendment rights to free speech. The idea that a democratically-elected official should be removed from their position because some people didn't like their Facebook post isn't just anti-American. It's also, in my opinion, much more disrespectful to the things that Charlie Kirk believed in when he was alive. He should not have been assassinated for his beliefs. Nobody should be. That is why we have these rights, and that is why everyone has them. If you think that the post that Jackie made is something that a select board person shouldn't make, you should not vote for them when it comes time to vote again. And maybe you should run for something and run for one of these positions. I would like to request the select board dismiss this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, last call. Okay. With that, I think we're, yes, wait a minute. But wait, there's one more. Go ahead.
Carolyn Scafidi, 13 Lynn Avenue. I'm here to support Jackie tonight and do not believe that she should resign or be asked to resign. She has brought so much to this community, and I was very thrilled that the community voted to have Jackie be on the select board. It gave me a lot of trust and faith in this community. And everyone has the right to free speech. And because she posted something on her personal Facebook page, I'm no longer on Facebook, so I really didn't see it. I heard about it. It should not be, it's against the First Amendment. Everybody has that right right now. And so I'm here just to support you, Jackie. And I think everything that you've done for this town and on this committee has been exemplary. And I know that you'll continue to do just great things that you have been doing. And so I am here to support you and to ask that Jackie not ever resign from this board or be asked to resign from this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead. See, I told you everybody'd be heard.
Suzanne Henderson, 5 Merrimack Way. Jackie did not speak inappropriately in their capacity as select board member. They were practicing their right to free speech on their personal Facebook page. What is disrespectful is the way Jackie has been treated since simply expressing a personal opinion in a non-cruel way. The hateful way they have been treated is unbelievably disrespectful, far worse than anything that Jackie is accused of doing. I have faith in our town to keep Jackie on the board, to continue to represent democratic views. Sorry that you have been such a target, Jackie. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, S. Smith, 39 Bows F. What's going on, guys? I've been sitting on boards here for 20 years. I mean, I voted for Jackie. I sat on the board there. I thought your post was vile, I'll be honest. But it's not about, you know, your personal freedoms, personal, you know, freedom of speech, all that. speech, all that, and a couple people say it, oh, they can post whatever they want. People don't seem to forget, a few years ago, this board of selectmen tried to fire somebody who worked for the town in Tinsborough for doing the exact same thing, Facebook posting, right? And the board voted three to one to keep him, one person voted to fire him, which is Ron. You know I love Ron. And then they actually asked this person to take sensitivity training. I'd like to know if this Select Board would do the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, so before we start back up with the agenda, I'd like to take a few minutes just to pause to let those who would like to leave, we have to move around some microphones to reorganize for that. But the citizens' business time is closed at this point in time. Thank you all for your respectful and your respectful exercise of the First Amendment. Appreciate it. I'll take a few moments.
Jackie should just declare that they are continuing as chair.
Thank you, everyone, for that brief moment to reset the room. I am resuming my responsibility as acting chair. Thank you, Clerk, for your service. Yeah, it's okay, it's a clap for everyone. You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Select Person Eldridge. And there was a question, just to be clear, I'm not going to make any sort of response now, but I will, in my Select Board report, read something that I prepared. So stay or don't, your call. Okay, so we're going to return to the agenda, but we're going to take it slightly out of order to respect everyone's time. I would like to jump back in at new business, so if folks are following along in the agenda, we're going to do 6A first, the change of DBA. Colin, I think you have the intro for that.
I will actually give it to my friend Jackie.
Oh, perfect.
Before the board this evening is an application from Mummy Lou's Cafe LLC located at 168 Middlesex Road, Unit 3, in Tinsborough, for a change of DBA, which is doing business as from Mummy Lou's Cafe to Twist by Heidi. The application is complete and in good order. Your approval this evening would update the current alcohol license as well as the common victoria license and the entertainment license. The DBA is the only change being requested. All other aspects of the license will remain the same. This does not require a formal hearing nor ABCC approval, only approval by the licensing, local licensing authority.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to...
Yes, please.
Yeah, direct the board, please.
Thank you for seeing us. For the record, Attorney Pete Nicosio, on behalf of the applicant, I have Mike and Heidi Santiago, who are the proprietors of Mummy Lou's, with me this evening. They've had great joy and success being in the town for over five years now. They've had a very successful restaurant location. I'm sure all, if not most of you, have been to the restaurant at different times. It's one of my personal favorites here in town. They've decided, you know, that their business path is going to change to cater to more of a dinner concept than, and moving away from, you know, the breakfast concept. So it's still going to be Mike and Heidi, still same license-holding entity, just a new trade name, switching from Mummy Lou's to Twist by Heidi. It's going to be a much more robust dinner menu. I'm told they're going to keep a lot of their fan favorites from the menu that exists today and expand from there, so it's going to be a more lucrative endeavor for them. But other than that, there's really no changes. So I'm sure as, as they finalize their menu and embark on the marketing campaign for the new concept, they will put that out there, and I'll certainly, if they want to say a few words and plug the restaurant, I'll have them do that before I turn it over to you. But that's the only change.
Perfect.
No, I just want to say thank you for having us here.
Residents are very upset at the thought of you closing, so I think that we all share enthusiasm to know that you are not leaving and that you are doing something new to serve the community, so...
Just rebranding.
Perfect. So I'd love to open it up to the board for any questions. Select Person Coughlin?
No, I have no questions.
Love the restaurant, and, you know, I know a lot of people were pretty sad when they heard you were closing, so now they hopefully will realize that you have rebranded yourselves. If there's anything you would like to say to encourage people to come to your new brand of restaurant, please speak now or forever hold your peace.
So I know that if, at the beginning, we did say Mummy Lou's is closing just because we kind of wanted the concept to be gone, even though it's going to remain with us at heart. But we're just going to be working more on a bolder menu leaning towards dinner. And like I said to a few people, even though we had opportunities to maybe go other places, we wanted to remain here in Tinsborough. We started in here quite a few years ago, and we do love the community and the support, so hopefully you will be able to support us on our next event.
Thank you. Select Person Coghain. Select Person Eldridge.
So I was concerned, because I think my wife and I were there a couple days before you made the announcement, and I was concerned that we might have had something to do with it, but I'm glad to hear that you will be continuing on under a different brand. Do you have a timeline for when you'd like to be reopening, so that folks can start to get, we'll certainly watch for it on Facebook and a variety of other places, but do you have a timeline?
So we are hoping it is not more than a month, or it could be, you know, about six weeks or so, just because we will be doing a few...
Cosmetic things.
Cosmetic things to the place and then also replacing the equipment that doesn't want to work anymore.
Good timing for that oven to go.
Yes, well, and we also, and I do want to bring it out there, add, the reason why we picked October 19th is actually that marks our five-year anniversary, opening as Mummy Lou's, so we kind of wanted to celebrate as we go.
And I think hopefully, just because it's a trade name change, which is viewed as ministerial in the eyes of the ABCC, they'll pump that through quicker than the normal timeframe. So once Jackie sends it down, we'll, we'll put some calls in down there to see if we can move it along.
No further questions from me. I look forward to your new branding and the new menu, and I will, I will come in and I'll be quiet, and I promise that I won't disturb anyone.
Thank you, Select Person Eldridge. I don't have any comments. I think this is wonderful, and I'm glad that you're not leaving the community. This is great. So I would love to entertain a motion.
Yes. I move that the Select Board approve the application for a change of DBA from Mummy Lou's Cafe LLC to DBA Twist by Heidi for all current licenses as presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
See you soon. All right, and now we're going to return back to the agenda, and we're going to have a joint meeting of the Rec Committee about Ironwood Park. So I don't know who's coming forward. I guess Allison, but is anyone else from Rec? Come on down, Allison! Yeah, everybody go! Woo, Rec Committee!
Find a seat with a mic.
Yeah, put yourself where a mic is. If you need to share, you let us know.
The full chair is up a few ways.
Yep. Colin, do you want them to formally open their meeting?
Yes. I mean, yeah, it's like saying by them appearing here and open, but yes, somebody can make a motion. And then I should quick intro.
Who's the chair of the Rec Committee?
Mike Knight, and he's on his way. He had a softball game, but he is coming.
Recreation. Okay. I would love for someone to entertain a motion to open the Rec Committee meeting.
I'll answer that question. I'm so moved.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know why I'm running your meeting, but you know, all those in favor.
Done. Okay.
Thank you all. I'm going to turn it over to Colin for some opening remarks.
Thank you. So I have a quick, just a couple of slides. Allison and I have sat down a couple times in the last few weeks. As you all know, we're coming up on the conclusion of our first season with Ironwood, which I think everyone agrees has proven to be a tremendous asset to the town, not just for hosting town events, but for people hanging out there. The Center for Active Living has started to use the property as well. The clubhouse, of course, has been a great place for, we've had department head meetings there, I know there's been events there that the Rec Committee's hosted. There have been a couple of questions that Allison and I have gotten from residents that we just want to get clarification from the Rec Committee and the Select Board before we make a decision. Her and I have kind of decided how we think it's the smoothest, but as the policy-setting body and as the body that the Select Board appoints to handle recreation and parks, we thought it would be best to have a joint meeting. So I have a couple of items, and then I'm sure there are, we can have questions. So really, what we want to discuss tonight is plans for the pavilion, plans for the clubhouse, maintenance challenges and plans for next year, staffing at the park and plans for next year, and then park rules and allowed uses. And again, we're not going to be able to address every single one of them tonight, because every time we get a new email, Allison and I are like, "What the heck? We didn't even think about this." So as, as we go through time, we'll have more questions to answer. But to start, we have that pavilion that was constructed. It was where the Rec Committee hosted the concert series over the summer. Right now, we're using it just for town-sponsored programming, but it is widely available. Obviously, if you show up and there's nobody under it, you're allowed to use it. One of the questions that we've gotten repeatedly is whether or not we would consider renting out the pavilion. So if you wanted to have a birthday party under the pavilion, could you reserve it? Right now, similar to Riverfront Park, there's no policy in place for reserving it. We basically just say, "You can use it, you got to take your trash with you, there's limited parking, and you can't restrict other people from accessing it." But I think having a clear message on what can happen under that pavilion will be helpful. We've already had at least one kind of serious request to use it. So what I think it may, I think what we should do, and what I'd be seeking input from the boards on, is clarifying that we don't rent out the pavilion. Right now, this may change. One of the things that I think I've said to this board, Nelson and I have talked about, is right now, our Rec Department is one person, Allison, and we ask Allison to, and all the volunteers to put the big events on, but day-to-day, it's Allison. We ask her to maintain the Old Town Hall, the first parish meeting house, now the clubhouse, to some extent, still the 120 West Road building. I think that we would be doing ourselves a disservice to add another item for her to manage, to make sure it's clean, to make sure it's reset. So that would be my recommendation on that. I would also say that we should post something that says that individuals can use it when it's not in use by the town, but formal things like parties, performances, structured events, things that could become a nuisance to the park or to the condos that are right next to it, we should really say probably no to, but obviously, we're looking for feedback from everybody on that aspect. Does it make sense, and Allison, I don't know if you have anything to add on that, for us to do it slide by slide?
However you want to do it, we can speak to each other if you prefer.
Yeah, let's stick with pavilion first.
Did you want us to speak first?
Yes.
I think that as a group, we have also had this discussion about the pavilion. We do feel that it should remain a no-rental municipal use type of a structure. It would involve us having to do bookings and cleaning and following of, you know, people's uses there if we open it up to such. Currently, in the rules and regulations, there is an hour's use of amenities on the property, so you have an hour's use of time, and then you must move on. That's the clear message that we set, as the committee set. So I think that that still stands. People do ask if they can use it, and that is my, my response to them. You have an hour's worth of use, and you cannot prohibit others to come into the pavilion while you are there. There's nothing about decorating or anything like that in the rules, though I do stress that it's not something that we're seeking for them to do, so.
It also isn't staffed nine to five, three days, and presents a problem. And again, Allison can't split in two and be here and there.
It's not staffed on the weekends. Nope.
We give her some time off.
Any other comments from the Rec Committee about that? I'll open it up to the Select Board. Select Person Coughlin?
No, I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Select Person Coghain?
So I also, I agree that we should not be renting the pavilion. I think when the residents voted for this park, it's a public park. It really should be open to all the residents on a fair and equal basis, and if we're renting it out, then it's not available. So I do not think we should be renting it out. And when we, I was on the Sherburne Committee, we talked about having a low-maintenance type of, of public park, and I hope that's what we try to continue to do as we move forward.
Thank you, Select Person Coghain. Select Person Eldridge.
I guess the only question is, are we missing anything by not having the pavilion? I think that there's a bunch of other places where people have opportunities if they did want to rent. We have some fantastic facilities. I don't, I personally don't think that we're missing anything out, particularly now. I mean, you know, we're half, three-quarters of the way through September. I don't envision we're going to have a ton of people trying to use the pavilion in the middle of December, but I don't see any reason to go through and change it. And there are other oppo- And there are other oper, there are other places where people can go through and have events. I don't think we need to add more complexity. I think as Select Person Cohane had said, keep it simple, keep it open, allow all residents to do it. I, unless I'm missing something in that there's a huge demand, we might have had one person that's, you know, one, that, hey, I want to go through and do it. I just think we might be over-complicating if we try to figure that out along with the other things that you have on you.
Thank you, Select Person Eldridge. Yeah, the one thing that just stood out for me is really the performances piece, because I think you're right, we have so many other venues in town that you would have a party or do these other things. The performances stood out because I have seen how successful the concert series has been. I wonder if there were a scenario where someone wanted a band to play or something like that, would they just reach out to the, to you, Allison, and maybe talk about like cosponsoring something, or like, I'm just trying to imagine what the workflow of that would look like? Like, how would someone approach that if they wanted to have a band perform for the town, not necessarily as a private concert, something like that?
It would have to be something that the committee would accept as one of their programs.
Okay.
I would have to chime in on that. Like any of the programs in the town, we're always open to any of the residents coming up and suggesting any kind of program, whether it be sports program, health program, or concert, whatever, bring it up to the committee, we'll talk about it, discuss it, and then if we decide to vote on it and move forward, then you work as a program under the Rec, Department of the Rec Committee.
Beautiful. I love that. Great. So, they would just reach out, attend a committee meeting presumably?
We have citizens' time.
Beautiful. Okay.
They can come and present what they want to do, and we can discuss it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, that's it for me. So, Colin, are you looking for any sort of formal direction?
Not right now. I mean, there was no disagreement, so we'll continue to be status quo.
For us to implement this, though, shouldn't we vote on? What are the implementing of the pavilion?
You, Claudia, you can do it all. It's totally up to you all. I defer to the board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in this case, we're not, we're not changing anything, right? Or do we want to say, we want to adopt the policy that will not be used for anything? Yeah, no, I've.
I think that policy's already written.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Do we already have, is this covered where we're not going to use it for anything, or is, do we already have that in place, or because there's no mechanism to allow it to happen?
Correct. So, you don't need to vote, because basically, it's already in transit of the policy. We wanted to make sure that nobody wanted to explore that next.
Perfect.
Is there any rules and regulations, pavilions available, public use first come, first served basis?
Yeah. Great. Thank you. So, Colm, do you want to advance the clubhouse?
So, similarly, there's no real vote required on this. Right now, and the next slide, we'll talk more about this, but right now, the clubhouse, which I think you've all had a chance to see, it gorgeous, it's open variable hours depending on Allison's availability. This year, we did have a senior tax worker, so that gave us a little bit more flexibility. When it is open, I know Allison has said people come in and drink their coffee, the facilities are open to them. We do not offer it for rent, and right off the top, that would be my recommendation, that we continue to not offer it for rent. If the board agrees, there's no vote required. What we'll talk about in the next slide is looking at how we increase staffing so that there are fixed hours, not just Monday through Friday, but even potentially on a Saturday. I think that we, you know, tonight, I'm hoping to just present how I think that would work. We have plenty of time to figure out the logistics. We haven't even started the budget season, but I wanted to make sure that nobody foresaw in the near future that this building would become a rental building in the same way that the Old Town Hall is.
Thank you. Rec Committee, any comments or concerns about that?
I am completely in agreement that it should not be an open rental like the other facilities. There's a lot more responsibility, upkeep, and details involved with renting, and once you open it up to a rental, it's opened up to everybody. You can't deny one versus another. We've had a lot of discussion about this as well, and this whole process, this whole park is a very fluid process. We're still learning and kind of adjusting along the way. We're going to make some adjustments in the offseason, in January, for a lot of things, but as it is right now, I suggest leave it as it is and see where we go from there.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Rec Committee? Any objections to that?
No, just, I would comment that increasing staffing to, if more open hours would definitely be a good thing. That would also allow you to have equipment that can be, you know, borrowed.
Borrowed.
Borrowed. For many of the facilities there.
After hours.
So, I think that would be a good thing to have those fixed hours, but that would have to be something worked out budget-wise.
Yeah, it would be nice to have somebody on the weekends, for instance, for lending out the equipment.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Select Person Coughlin?
I agree with the recommendations. I'm just curious, do you keep track of any potential requests? You know, just to say, we'd like to rent out the clubhouse, or to see how often or frequent that you're getting these requests? Do you know?
It's been very casual. Do you have a?
I was going to say the same thing. It's very casual, because we don't have a process for it, so it's mostly people who are in the park who'll come in and into the building for whatever reason, to use the facilities, or just to kind of see, and people, that's a question that they do ask, do we rent the building?
Yeah, just in conversation, there hasn't been any formal requests, right?
No.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Select Person Cohane?
I'm glad, welcome Mike, by the way. In case you snuck in and nobody saw you, Mike's here. Glad we're having this conversation. It's long overdue. The, I also don't think we should be renting the facility. I look at the whole thing as a public park. Let's keep it as a public park, and let's, you know, that's, that's what I thought we were putting together when the Sherburne Committee, and that's what hopefully we can continue to do. As it relates to rentals, as Colin will attest, I've had multiple people come up to me and ask for rentals and how they could get some equipment, even during off-hours. I have made the recommendation to Colin or asked him to bring it forward to you. You know, what Drakeit does is they have a locker.
I was going to ask them, yeah.
And that locker, it's, you know, if you want to get in, it's your zip code, the zip code of Tingsborough, somebody, something that everybody can remember, hopefully, at least I would hope so. And then you just have some equipment in there. Having talked to Drakeit and the people that run that facility, nothing has ever been stolen there. So, that is a way of having stuff available, bocce balls, the shuffleboard, maybe even horseshoes, and that's really about what you would need in there. And if you want to stick a couple of paddles in there in case people want that, it really isn't a lot of equipment. You know, we're not in budget season, we're not going to discuss the budget, but, you know, during the summer, it's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's 12 hours. I don't really want to staff 12 hours. People are sick, and then you have to staff. I mean, having a locker has worked extremely well in Drakeit, and I think this is one of the options that I hope is discussed in the near future, because I think it's long overdue. I've had multiple residents actually recommend this to me and discuss this with me. I've had people walk to the park and go like, if there was a locker there, I would have played bocce ball, you know? So, I'll just put that forward.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on that. That is a great idea. We've actually looked into a couple versions of lockers. The upfront cost is substantial, but I think in the long run, maybe it is something that we should look into moving forward, or at least compare.
Yeah, I mean, Drakeit has two types of lockers. They have a plastic locker and they have a metal locker.
Yeah, it's similar to a kiosk for like Amazon.
Is the locker something that's outside and not inside?
Yeah.
Because that way, you don't want the, the traffic going in and out over the weekend and after hours.
What they do in Drakeit is they just attach it to the pickleball court, because you have a fence there.
Oh, okay.
You can bolt it to the pickleball court, and then, you know, you just have a lock where people can just go in, and all you ask them to do is, if you need to take it out, please lock it, and please return the equipment when you're done.
I'd like to point out that you'd still need staffing, though, with the locker, because I, I mean, I'm glad Drakeit didn't have anything stolen, but I can imagine that some people leave stuff out, or, you know, what if stuff gets broken, or, you know, we're still going to have to staff that some, that it wouldn't be just a easy solution to let everybody self-police and make sure that it's being kept up.
Chair Giffords?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so somebody will have to, you know, check on it now and then, but, you know, it's not 12 hours a day. You know, you can just check on it now and then. As I said at Drakeit, I mean, I don't know if everybody knows, you know, the Drakei played pickleball there quite a bit. They have four nets, they have at least 20 balls in there and paddles, and they've never gotten anything stolen, or anything's been broken that they told me. So, you know, I think we got to respect and hopefully, you know, lots of residents, you know, I think everybody's going to be respectful. This is, this is our park, and hopefully, everybody's respectful, and something like it's stolen sometimes, something like it's broken, but it'll be a lot cheaper than staffing, you know, 12 hours a day in the summertime.
Thank you, Mr. Cohane. Select Person Eldridge?
Relative to the clubhouse, I mean, I don't, I don't see any need to open that up for, you know, at this point in time. I think this falls into that category that we run into all the time, where we have CPC money goes in, we put something in place, and then we've got to maintain it and operate it on an ongoing basis, and we have to figure out how we budget for that and how we plan for those things. I appreciate that everybody is looking at different ways in which we can accomplish that without, you know, understanding, we don't have unlimited funds. And so, I think figuring things out, you know, this is year one, continuing to figure stuff out and trying to make it better, I think, just the fact that we're having this discussion, I think, is important, and we need to continue to do that. I don't see any need to change the rental situation with the clubhouse. Let's figure out what we do with the budget next year and how we can provide additional types of opportunities for people, for residents, to take advantage of that fantastic facility.
Just said, you know, the Rec Committee has thought about long-term in terms of what might be needed in five years, 10 years, so it's on our, it's on our minds. It hasn't been.
I meant more us. You folks know what's there. I'm talking about the collective, how do we get it into the, so that Colin gets creative and we get it into the budget? Because, yeah, there's a, I think we share that, right, to sit there and say, hey, we want to not just have the facilities, but we want to be able to maintain them, we want to be able to have services, we want to have all those things that are there that residents can take advantage of. The hard part is making sure that we can fund all those things with everything else that's going on.
Yeah, there's operational costs that hopefully you can work into the budget, so it remains as nice as it is now, as it does, you know, three years from now.
Yep. Yeah, so I had no other questions relative to that.
Thank you, Select Person Eldridge. I can see. I just had a comment. Oh, please, yeah.
So, it's been very popular that we can, to have it not, I think having lockers are something available. Kind of a, allow people to utilize what's out there much more often, bocce balls. That isn't feasible, but it really does hold it up to who views and easy to track kind of help. That gives you a start. Here's to say, it's too small, or you'll find issues, but you have to try something, get the equipment available for people, for all the sports.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I can see a scenario where we, I would imagine renting the clubhouse, but I think it would be premature to do that at this point. I think there are too many obstacles that would just get in the way of that. I think the staffing is probably the most significant, but maintaining yet another rentable space doesn't make sense right now, given the constraints, but I do think that down the road, and I think that you're right, I think we work towards it over time, and we grow, and we just do things incrementally as we can and get things in the hands of our residents sooner rather than later. Perfect.
I have a comment.
Yeah, please.
I think our vision for the clubhouse was for municipal availability and for our recreation programs and things that we were going to be running, that we're concerned about significant wear and tear on the beautiful building that it is, having seen previous buildings that we've been involved with, like 120 Westford Road took quite a beating over the years. So, we're just sort of protective of this new beautiful asset to our town and want to keep it nice.
We'll take a long time to get there. Thank you.
It is true. We can, we've seen the movie over and over and over again, and how things happening, and how things don't get repaired as quickly as they should get repaired and whatever else, so.
And it is available for going to enjoy right now.
Yeah.
It can go in and have a nice cup of coffee and read a book and.
As long as it's staffed.
Yeah, as long as it's staffed right now.
Perfect. Thank you, Trace. Any, anything from us? It sounds like we're all in agreement.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
So, the next one is really just more for information, because you've all kind of hinted to it, that we have this history in Tingsborough of taking on new things or building new things and then not developing a plan for maintaining them. So, I, this is more of a slide to kind of put the burden on me to make sure that our future budget plans incorporate this. Our DPW has been fantastic, helping install even the disc golf. Maintaining it and mowing it was something that was a challenge at the beginning. Fortunately, we have a new tractor, which has made that a lot more beneficial. In the long run, we are still, we're adding things for our DPW to mow and take care of without adding staff, so it's not an immediate issue. We'll be able to continue this, I think, and I'd open it up to the Rec Committee to share their perspective. I think the general maintenance of the parcel, emptying of the trash, and mowing has been good this season, but it is something that I just want to kind of create pressure on myself and on this board, that eventually, we will have to address a long-term plan for, you know, kind of dovetails into DPW. One of the areas that is not currently addressed really is the upkeep of the actual clubhouse. Now, it's been easy, because we haven't used the clubhouse for all that much, and there's limited hours that it's open, but one of the things that we have to consider is who's responsible for sweeping, mopping, emptying the trash, bathrooms, checking the courts in the morning, clearing trash and debris. That is something that in a future slide could be the responsibility of a part-time position at that building. Right now, our Town Facilities Division will help Allison with larger problems, but to be totally blunt, we have barely enough facility staff to maintain our buildings that are in use every day, whether it's police, COAs become an issue this building. So, whatever we do in the clubhouse, eventually, we do have to address the fact that somebody has to be responsible for, and it can't be Allison, for sweeping, for mopping, for emptying the trash, refilling the bathroom. As that building starts to get used more, these are just considerations that we often forget until it's too late. So, again, there's no action needed by anybody. I'd be interested to see if the Rec Committee has any feedback on the overall maintenance of the parcel, ways that we can improve next season, but as far as the clubhouse, this was more of just putting it out there that it's something that we're going to have to talk about in the future.
So, I, my comment on that would be part of that part-time staff, but also need to consider doing some of the finer detail work for landscaping, things like line trimming. I mean, the mowing's been great, but I think some of the finer edging and detail, things like that, which is much more time-sensitive and requires a lot more effort. I mean, it's a large parcel to mow, but it takes a long time to do the lines out there. I think that should be considered as well.
Yeah, I agree with that. They've done a good job, not, not, there's room for improvement.
Yes, I second that.
Yeah, I also want to say that we should be putting the park under the tree warden's thoughts, too, for springtime. After a winter of snow, there's going to be branches and trees that need maintenance most likely. I think that needs to be examined periodically throughout the year. You don't want limbs coming down as people walk.
We don't want any widowmakers.
Yes.
We can have DPW look at that. Technically, the tree warden is only legally responsible for street trees, but trees in the parcel, we can have DPW keep an eye on.
Yeah, it's something to put on the radar if we haven't thought of it.
So, as it stands right now, the sweeping, mopping, trash bathrooms, checking courts, clearing, is that all you, Allison? So, right now, it's all of Allison? So, right now, it's all of Allison? From the outside looking in, as a resident, I think someone at a director level shouldn't be doing that, and I think money could be well spent having a staff, a second staff person come in and doing those things by two cents.
Any other comments from Rec Committee members?
Just that we also need to be thinking of our five and 10-year plans, too, on maintaining the buildings and the other facilities, like when do they need to be seal-coated? There's a lot of blacktop out in that park. You know, as much as it's a big green space, there's a lot of blacktop that needs to be maintained on all the courts and the walking paths. There's painting schedules, there's probably finishing schedules on the pavilion itself, that beautiful wood that's there now, you're gonna wanna maintain that. You can't let that go, or it won't be there in 20 years. Maintain it properly, it'll be there in probably 50 or 100 years.
I'd also like to make the comment of all of us here, that the work that we all do, that we volunteer to help her, to pull off everything that's done for this town, for all of these events, that she can't do it all on her own, and all of us do it. So, without, unless, you know, so she could use a little bit of it, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I do wanna thank you for all the work you do, you know, you know, there's so many big events that you have, and, you know, clearly, you know, although Allison's great, I know she's not Superwoman, and she can't do it all.
She is Superwoman.
Well, you know, she can't be in separate, she can't be in too many places all at once. So, but you know, I do wanna thank everybody for all the hard work they do. You know, I see, you know, these big events, how often you guys are all out there helping out. Mike, he's there every day, I think. I mean, every day I go by, he's out there doing something, if there's a big event going on.
With a smile.
Oh, but my question, I did have a question, too. So, if somebody sees an issue that needs maintenance on the park, so one example is the bocce courts right now, one of the wood pieces has kinda separated a little bit, as you throw the bocce ball down, it smacks on the wood and stops the ball from rolling forward. Who should they contact for that? Is that the DPW? Is that the Rec Committee?
Ultimately, we'd end up in DPW. Some of the issues can be addressed by our facilities man, who's in DPW. Some of the bigger things, we've used, like the Highway Division to do some of the bigger projects, depending on what equipment is needed. So whether it's that they let Allison or my office know, eventually, it gets to DPW.
Either you or Allison.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what budgets does that come from?
It's a great question. We, so we do still, that's a great question.
It's a perfect question.
I think that we haven't yet closed out the, some of the things that we're dealing with now are still like the newer items, so we still have a little bit of budget left in the original project. The building's not generating any revenue, so it's not, really, it really wouldn't come out of the revolving or the building revolving. So that's another budgetary consideration, there's not, we haven't added a new, we have a public buildings ground maintenance, which generally covers this building, and every time I submit a building, it has to Jackie yells at me, so that is something that needs to be decided moving forward.
Is it true that it's the same budget now as it was before Ironwood even opened?
Correct. We made no budgetary changes anywhere in the budget after Ironwood opened.
Okay.
I do have a question, about the grounds. Does it have to do with the budget, why some areas of the ground are not taken care of as well as some of the others? Longer grass, you know, shorter grass, the edges could, does that have to do with budget? Or, because I personally think, because we have, you know, dogs there, walking paths, everything ticks, you know, bugs, everything, are, they're gonna be drawn to those areas if we don't keep it down lower, you know, cut those areas and clean it up a little bit better. The season's already over, you know, but for next year, it's just a thought that, I mean, I know maybe it looks natural that way, but it's a park, you know, I mean...
Yeah, it's sort of a budget issue in that, it's just that we didn't add any staff to DPW. So if one, we have nine full-time employees in the Highway Division, if one of them takes the day off, that throws everything off, because two are doing patches, two are doing the hot patches. One of the things that our DPW superintendent is looking at is many towns will do like a seasonal employee situation through a state agency, where the state pays for high school seniors or college freshmen that participate in this program to work with local DPWs. You have to be certified first, and so we're going through the process of getting to that. That will help, because then it could be somebody that's assigned to do the edging. Right now, what gets mowed, they prioritize the area where the disc golf is, so people can walk on it. Aside from that, it's really subject to their availability. The DPW is also mowing bicentennial field, and so when we get to August, we start to get calls quite regularly from the coaches at the school that the grass is too tall, and so then DPW is forced to make a decision while we can let Ironwood go another week and take care of the field. So, I guess it is a budget issue, because I don't have the budget to hire a 10th DPW person, but it's also a combination of that personnel. But the part-time person through the DPW, that would help, because that could be one or two people who, all summer long, are responsible for the edging, for kind of the finer details that that tractor doesn't get.
I feel like we had some folks like that, that were helping at the beach over the years, that we had a part-time seasonal person in the house, that was working really well.
We did, I don't know if we ended up hiring any this year, but in the last couple of years, out of the Rec Committee's budget, we did hire part-time beach attendants. The program that I'm referencing, if we get into it...
Actually, I was talking about the DPW.
Oh.
That there was somebody extra on that was able to help them with the mowing and trimming at the beach and that kind of thing.
I think some of those wet areas she, my wife may be talking about, is, could be wet, very wet in the spring where there's drainage, so it's considered a conservation-type thing, where, most like a DPW in the morning. I think you're talking about going down left inside that heavy stuff, no?
No. Some areas, Allison's right.
Did you guys wanna fight it?
No.
Take it outside.
It's very hot. I know you were complaining about that one.
You see, I still complain to him if we go out there.
I am comfortable with the public addressing this very large meeting in a meeting, that that is fine. I would just ask you to come up to the podium, it's okay if people...
Okay, I'm the Rec Committee, but not.
Just be at a mic, that, you're good.
Thank you, I apologize.
You're good.
So, part of discussions, maybe for next year, for the following years, is that we could just manage the expectations of how we can keep that park beautiful with the landscaping. So, you know, I'm sure the DPW is doing the best they can with what they have, and we're blessed to have that, but let's see how we can make improvements moving forward. That's the ultimate goal.
I was thinking for health reasons, right?
Yeah.
For ticks and, you know...
Oh, yeah, you know, field mice and whatever else.
Yeah, whatever it is, yes, yes.
Can I just address the concern that you had about who to contact if there was issues? I would prefer that it would come through my office, if at all possible. For one, I don't think that the town manager needs to deal with that. I feel like it can come through the Rec Department, just because now the committee also has eyes on it. They would also get notification that there was some sort of issue at whatever park, and then I can deal with it, with our DPW director, and figure out where it goes from there. It just gives us a little bit more eyes on everything, that when something is of issue, we can address it a little better.
Totally agree.
Thank you, Allison.
It's on?
Yeah.
Okay, just quick, quick input on that, about the grounds, is sustainability, and I support what Ed's saying, I think some of that might be being let go, let grow for stormwater management in the spring. This isn't a golf course, it's a, it's a, it's a park, and it's got some fields in it, and I think leaving some areas to grow is important for stormwater management, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Chair, if I might?
You may.
So, it sounds like, as we're figuring things out, I think, we have a map, right? We should go through and identify for each of the things that are there, get like a little checklist going and identify who's doing it, because my guess is, some folks at the DPW would do it if they knew that it needed to be done. They're very conscientious, but if we can give them a list and just say, here's some things, maybe every couple of weeks, but I think in addition to that, it'll identify things that we've missed. You know, we look at it and say, oh, you know, what about this? Well, we don't do that, because it's conservation. But at least if we're working from something, you get a map, you get a thing, then everybody's at least quote on the same page, right? So, I think it's just a matter of, as, as we're figuring stuff out, we put it down, and we be methodical about it, I think it's the same thing with the building maintenance, right? We said for all of our buildings, certain things that need to be done. I find if, if we document it and we have a plan, we're pretty good. It's the stuff where we just wing it, and it's not because we're, you know, trying to not be good, it's just there's a lot of stuff that's going on, and I think it was probably, it's probably in our best interest to work with DPW and Allison. Let's just come up with something, and then everybody kinda knows what to expect, I think that's what...
Yeah, just a communication, 'cause your opinion about what looks good and your opinion might, might be totally different.
Exactly.
Just everyone's on the same page, and everything moves forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, one last thing on that, so, just realize that sometimes residents, you know, they like to talk to the select board, so if they give me, you know, and now, based on what we just discussed, if there's a maintenance particular issue, I have to go to Colin, because of Town Manager Act, I don't go to Allison, because she's part of the staff, I go to Colin, and then Colin sends it to Allison. But just so you know, that's kind of the sequence of events. Now that we have a Town Manager Act, that's how we, that's how we've been acting for how many years? Three? And even before that, another year or two, that's how we did it also. So, you may hear of a maintenance issue, like with the bocce ball, now I would, I would just tell Colin to tell Allison. Then they work with the DPW and help, and between them, or between Colin and Jake, they prioritize what needs to be done, not only on Ironwood, but all the other fields and all the other responsibilities that they have.
Mike, might I make a suggestion? On the website, is there a place that you can have an email, like if you see something of concern, the email would go to Allison and Colin, or wherever you might want it to be? That way, if someone says, Ron, this is some blah blah blah, like, oh, just go to the town website, and you can, you can just send a message of what your concern is.
Right on the parks page, yeah.
And then there's documentation, and it's not just someone talking to someone else. Just a suggestion.
There's probably a system that would have to be implemented, but, you know, with just about everything, it works pretty well with me telling Colin, and, you know, I ask Colin all the time, you know, what's the update, what's the update, what's the update, until he gets it, until he gives it to me.
Except there's no documentation doing it that way.
He documents.
But for residents, I think that's where the benefit would be, the residents can go through and do that. We have to be a little bit different, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't set up our processes based on us, it's really for the residents and what's easy for them to notify that, hey, something needs to be done.
In the interest of getting through these slides, Select Person Coughlin, any... Great. Colin? Next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, this is the slide I'm most excited about. So, Steph, and we've talked about this, I won't repeat, what I am exploring, and I'm just exploring, I haven't even looked at the budget for next year, so I'm not guaranteeing anything, but what could work is a seasonal part-time recreation coordinator, 25 hours a week, four weekdays plus Saturdays, that gets us one weekend day, five hours each day, April to October to start. I'm not saying that eventually, there's not a need for this to be a regular, more permanent position. I've talked to Allison, and if Allison worked five hours per week on a different day, so not one of the days that that part-time coordinator was there, that would give us six days, albeit with limited hours, not the 12, of that building being open, so that people can go inside and use the bathroom, or sit down, have a cup of coffee. It would also allow us to advertise regular hours, particularly when we get toward the end of the summer and Allison's working on Festival of Trees, it's a lot harder to predict while Allison will be able to be there on Thursday from eight to one, because if there's a meeting about festival, I mean, about block parties, then she's gotta leave, and there's nobody there to cover it. So, a model similar to this, I'm not saying this is the perfect solution, and I'll work with Allison as we develop the budget, would allow us to at least say, to start, that five day, or six days a week, the building is open, five hours a day, people would know when those are, are happening. We could make it so that some days are geared more toward the morning, some are more toward the afternoon, so that everybody gets a chance. And this wouldn't be an incredible draw on the budget. I haven't run any of the numbers, but certainly, 25 hours weekly for April to October, be a lot less than a full-time position, the position wouldn't be benefit-eligible, so it wouldn't be a breaker of the bank, but I don't know how tight the budget will be next year, so I'm not promising anything, but I do think that it makes sense for us to prioritize this, if we're gonna include anything new in the budget next year. And again, think about this position as more than just saying the building is open, it's somebody who can be responsible for keeping up with the inside of the clubhouse. If the lockers are installed, checking them in the morning to make sure that everything is there, if something is missing, replacing it, making sure that there's nothing on the courts when the courts open in the morning, things like that, and we'll have plenty of time to iron out their specific responsibilities, but I intend, at this point at least, to make this a serious consideration for a new position in fiscal year 27's budget.
Thank you. Colin, any reactions, responses to that from the Rec Committee?
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
My initial reaction is, it's well overdue, and the fact that...
That's great.
Great idea.
This park is causing that reaction, I think is a positive thing, for the residents, not only for Allison, but for the residents, 'cause I've seen residents come up and, and, you know, they want to, you know, what's going on in there? Can I come in? Can I rent something? And like, I don't see any downside to it.
We're very, we're so excited that the park is being used as much as it is, it's so fun to drive in and see, like, everybody doing stuff, you know, and enjoying it, so I think it'd be wonderful to have that extra attention.
I think we have to get prepared, if it's only gonna be, if we're already getting used this amount, can you imagine what's gonna be next year, when we're even, when she's got everything even more, or, you know, not more organized, we're already pretty organized. Next year's even gonna, you know, it's gonna hit bigger. I know.
Love them.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Select Person Coughlin.
I think this is a great idea. No, this potential part-time employee would just be stationed at the, there, they wouldn't be like, oh, we need you somewhere else, it'd just be right there.
That would be their primary responsibility, we'd have to look at the job description, but yeah, the main assignment would be at the clubhouse. And there are other things, certainly, that Allison can use help with while they're at the clubhouse, so that they're not just sitting there, but that would be the focus.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Mike, did you have a comment?
No, I just know that over all the years, working with Allison, she's taken on so much.
You're the best, brother. I love you, Michael.
It's gonna have its own turn, you're good.
You can talk if you want.
I'm always just standing behind you, Michael.
All right. I just know, a lot of people do not know what Allison takes on, and I spend a lot of time with her, and it's time that we all figure out together what we're gonna do to help the Rec Department here, because, trust me, it's long overdue, and a lot of hours we've worked together to try and figure out what we're gonna do. We're definitely going in the right direction, we just need that one little push now, so let's see what we can do as a group, it'd be great. All right, what do you have to say?
So, I'm all in favor of the pot to help Allison, she definitely needs it. But another thing I'm really concerned about for next year, and I've already talked with Allison about this, like, many times, and Colin, irrigation. I mean, it's dry. Irrigation's gonna be a big number, I mean, $250,000, $300,000 to irrigate that, but it's gonna need it, so that's something I think we should look into getting done next year.
Thank you, Ed. Select Person Cogan.
Yeah, so there's, you know, we just mentioned a whole bunch of things that we, we gotta work in greater detail on, right? You know, but just to set the right expectation, you know, we are, we are in the mode of, this is gonna be, the next year's gonna be the toughest budget year we've had since the nine years I've been here, so, you know, we just have to keep that in mind, you know, I don't wanna say our expectations, and, you know, it's gonna be a tough budget year. So, we have a lot of work to do, we haven't really started it yet, but, I mean, all the requests that you have, I'm sure they'll be going through Allison, we're gonna make, you know, gonna make a budget request. We've had a lot of good discussions about maintenance and everything else, and all that stuff, and staffing, and DPW staffing and everything else, we need to put it all forward, and then work on a detailed plan for next year, but it is gonna be a tough... But it is going to be a tough year, just, just to let you know, if you haven't heard already.
Thank you. Select person Eldridge.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like the idea and concept. I think, um, you know, you've always been very conservative in looking at the budget, so I, I think it'll be incumbent upon you to figure out, does this work? And is this the, the right balance of things? Let's look for grants. You know, one of the things it could be that because this is not a full-time hire, it might be something if we can find a grant for one year to help defray those costs, to sit there and say, let's try it out. I'm, I'm not saying it's a, it's a huge grant opportunity and that, you know, there's lots of these things, but we should look at those types of things because this is a little bit different. Um, you know, it's not a full-time position. It's something like we're trying with all these things is, let's try it out and, and see. And that might give us an opportunity, uh, because I do think it is going to be a difficult budget year. And I'd love to say that it's just going to be tough this year. I think we're, we're heading into a few different years, so. I love ideas. Let's see if we can, you know, make it work within the budget that we have. And let's maybe find some creative funding mechanisms and, and, I don't know, is there a sponsor? Are there different things? We can be creative in, in how we look at, at doing some of these things, uh, because it does ultimately benefit a, a large group of people who take advantage of, of that facility. So I'm on board with you continuing down that path to see if it works. And if it, if it does, fantastic. If it doesn't, well then, you know, we tried and we'll revisit it the following year too. I, I don't think it's something that we'd want to give up on.
I'd like to hear your direction that it's, it's kind of, you're open to ideas and changes and creativity and seeing what works and seeing what doesn't work. It's no exact science. We're, we're all figuring out together. That's good.
Uncharted territory. I mean, you know, we're all going through these things and I think it's, you're ultimately trying to figure out what's going to work best in a variety of different ways and I, I think, you know, we tell Allison all the time, she's like, oh, you know, we're looking at the, the cost here, try it. And then come back a year if you need to go through and, and, uh, increase the rates or do something different. Go for it. I, I wish that we could come up with something that was perfect each time. You, you start out with something, but that, that's just not realistic. So we do have to have that flexibility.
Same with the events that we do, the block party, seventh, eighth year, whatever it is, every year we change it every year, try to make tweaks and adjust and, you know. I'm just happy to hear that you all are open for, for adjustments anyways. It's nice.
Yeah, and I would say I think this is really the beauty of having the different boards and committees that we have in town because you all are passionate about this. That's why you're the ones that are volunteering for these events, right? You wouldn't choose to be on Rec Committee if you didn't care about recreation in town. So please, you know, be creative, be innovative, be curious and explore. And I love that we have this joint meeting, that we can have this conversation, but absolutely, you know, dream big and bring your ideas to us and we'll see what we can do. I think that's great. Any other thoughts about staffing? Colin?
Same slide.
It duplicated? How embarrassing.
I was going to say something to you, but I figured you'd catch it.
Demerits.
So the last thing, and this is something that we came up with, we've encountered recently, is that I would be seeking a vote if both boards are amenable, certainly the select board, to clarify that fundraising is prohibited on the site. Fundraising on municipal property is a very interesting dynamic. We have for every building, really with the exception of the Old Town Hall and First Parish, and I'll come back to those, a strict no fundraising policy. So I think that we updated it two years ago, particularly here in this building. And the problem is a 2022 Supreme Court ruling in Massachusetts basically said, when you let one person do, you have to let another person do. And so nobody, whether it's the Rec Committee, myself, Allison, the select board, can be the arbiter of what is a good fundraiser and what is a bad fundraiser. So if I wanted to have a fundraiser for the, um, American Heart Society, you probably would all say, that's a wonderful thing. If Sean wanted to have one to buy himself a new truck, we'd probably agree that's not appropriate. But if you let me, thank you, if you let me do it for the ALS or the American Heart Society, the law says you can't say Sean can't do it. And so our approach has just been, it's easier to say, sorry, Sean, no fundraisers. Now, Old Town Hall and First Parish are slightly different because we essentially grant a renter a license. So for the period of time that they've rented it and they pay for it, they can do largely within the parameters of our rules for that building, whatever they like. Here, we are not offering the land for rent. We're not offering the buildings for rent. And so it is truly a municipal parcel. The policy right now doesn't explicitly say no fundraising. And so I would like to be able to say if somebody asks, it's prohibited. Now, can you cover every single basis? No, and this is the whole learning thing. But I think that given that we're not renting it out, the same rules that apply to this parcel, to the Center for Active Living, to all these other places should apply to Ironwood Park.
Thank you. Colin, any thoughts, reactions?
Does no fundraising also mean? I don't know, there's another way to raise funds with not calling it fundraising, like, uh, I don't know. I, I know a few weeks ago there was some sort of, uh, something going on on the pickleball courts. I don't know if it was a fundraiser, but it was something.
Uh, under this policy, that would also be prohibited.
Okay.
Essentially what you create regardless of the cause is a circumstance where one person can sell access to a public good that anybody should have access to. So if, if I said I'm going to have a charity volleyball tournament.
That's what I'm talking, yeah.
I would essentially be saying that even though I don't own the volleyball court, I'm going to charge $15 and if you all participate, I'm going to donate. Now, whether I donate it or not is not the question. It's a public good that everybody has a right to. And unless we grant these licenses similar to a rental of the Old Town Hall, the First Parish, you're really creating kind of a murky. So yes, it would apply to charitable.
Charitable offense, that's what, that's the word I was.
It would not apply however, and we run into this here, like the Friends of the Tingsborough Public Library. The money that they raise directly goes to the Tingsborough Public Library. There's no intermediary. There's no question about what it supports. That is allowed here, similar with the Friends of the Tingsborough Council on Aging. So if the Rec Committee was doing some sort of fundraiser to support town programs, that would be permissible. This is exclusively about outside fundraising.
So they couldn't have a, a disc golf, a charity disc golf tournament or something like that? That would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I, and I'm not saying that at some point we get to a point where we can develop a comprehensive policy that tries to allow for it. It's just, it's a lot harder than it sounds because again, you can't be the arbiter of what is a good fundraiser and what is not a good fundraiser.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Same thing with the rental of the pavilion.
Exactly.
How about schools and/or school sports teams also not?
We treat this, because the school department is technically an entity of the town, if they're fundraising directly for the schools, um, I can think like the theater program, I think has a friends group. We confirm with the school department that those funds go directly to it and we have allowed that. Organized events would still require you going through the Rec Department, but, um, I know there's a PT or a booster club now. They are allowed to fundraise on like the school property, again, because the funding is going directly back to the town, in this case through the school.
Select person Cofflin.
Nope, nothing at this time.
Select person Cohen.
I'd agree with Colin.
Select person Eldridge.
Um, relative to this, um, shouldn't we have like a, a town-wide policy that covers all the municipals? And then you don't have to worry about as we add another facility rather than adding it in piecemeal. Shouldn't we say that for all of our municipal buildings that here's, here's what the policy is, um, so that we don't have to keep adding those in?
Yes, it just depends on what the, so like you, you wouldn't apply that policy to the First Parish and the Old Town Hall because they get a license. If down the road, the clubhouse was something we chose to rent, we'd have to amend the policy to match it. Currently, you have a policy in place that covers all the other ones through their individual policy. This is the only one that's lacking one.
Okay, so I'm fine, I'm, I'm good with adding this in now. However, I would go through and look at it across the entire town so we don't have to deal with these types of things. Because they may, we may decide that we're going to rent out the pavilion and there's a license that would come with that and, and it would then fall into, you know, like it is with First Parish and, and the Old Town Hall. So find, addressing this shortcoming right now, fill in that gap, but I think we should look at it across all town buildings. Come up with something that's consistent because then the next thing that we come into, we, we won't have to, we won't have to have that discussion there.
I, I think for your buildings, they all have it in the policy. The one I'll have to look at, I'm, I'm not sure that there is a policy for the Riverfront Park. That may be the, not that I want to expose our vulnerabilities, but that might be.
If anyone would like to fundraise.
Has its own policy that currently says it, but I'll double check on.
Sean's getting that truck after all.
Can we, while we're addressing that, can we address Riverfront Park policies? Because technically that is not the Recreation Committee's property. That is the select board's property.
We have a property. How nice is that?
So from a, uh, from an agenda standpoint, it's not on the agenda, so we can address it, but not at this meeting.
I, I, yes, thank you. I didn't mean now. Because we're discussing this particular item.
Yeah, all the time. If we get gaps, let's fill them. You know, let's, let's make sure that we're addressing these things.
Beautiful.
Do we, do we need, do you need a vote on this?
Yes, preferably.
This is our policy.
Um, whose policy is it?
We developed it and you approved it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's take.
Maybe we both have the motion.
I think we should take their, uh, recommendation under consideration, so let them vote.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we have no fundraising to our rules and regulations.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Opposed? Stand?
That carries.
We'll count. Beautiful.
Eleven, zero, zero.
Well.
Who did I miss?
Missed Mike.
Oh, great, because he came in later.
I got you.
That's all right.
Thank you for your recommendation. I would like to entertain a motion to.
So we are adopting the recommendation as posed for no fundraising.
Correct.
I make a motion that we accept the proposed recommendation, uh, and formalize as a policy uh, for no fundraising on, at Ironwood Park.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries four, zero, zero. Okay, so we have that one down. I think that's the last slide, but isn't there another thing that we're talking about today?
This is all that I had. I figured if there were other topics to discuss at the leisure of the board, but these are the only topics I wanted to cover.
You may.
What about?
I can see all of your eyes. You're like, I got pickleball to play, so.
But I'm, my name's Bev Kohler and I live on Nine Ballsome Court. And I'm actually, um, here to just talk a little bit about the pickleball courts and some, um, thoughts around them. And I'm glad that Allison and your team is here. Um, anyway, we are, I just want to, I'm speaking on behalf of some of the pickleball players. And we are very grateful for the parks that we have and the dedicated courts. They are gorgeous and it's wonderful. So that's the first thing I really want to say, you know? Um, there are a few areas that, just three, that I want to just briefly talk about and just, I have proposed solutions. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. It's more for discussion. And if we decide to move forward on it, we can get a small team together to just work through the details, okay? So, um, anyway, the first one is around signup and communication. The current tool that we're using, signup genius is kind of awkward, hard to navigate. Um, has a lot of pop-up ads and not a lot of communication features. Um, so it becomes a little challenging. I, the, the, we are recommending that we just move to the team reach application, which is free, okay? And signup genius is free as well. Um, but it's just much easier to communicate with that particular application. You can communicate to people if the court conditions are wet and you don't think they should come down. There's an RSVP system where you can just easily say whether you're attending, not attending, or maybe attending. Um, and you can announce things. You can get information out to people. It's just a much user-friendly. And it is, by the way, used predominantly and by most pickleball courts. So, and the other thing is, is it's not more work for Allison who seems very, very, um, overworked. Um, it's, this is something that would be run by a couple of people who have been identified as leaders, who communicate and work closely with Allison, her team, so that we're aware of planned events that are happening, so forth. Um, but it helps to take the burden off of the, the Rec Department specifically, but doesn't keep them out of the loop. But anyway, details can be worked out later. The other thing is just around safety and, um, hazards. Uh, sometimes bags and gear are left on the courts. Um, and there are times when people, it's very social sport, so people will gather and, you know, kind of get in the way of, of players at times. So the proposal around that is just to get a little bit of clear signage, um, and communicate that information out. Not the, these are not hard recommendations. And then kind of the last topic that I wanted to bring up is just predictable and inclusive play. Right now, it's a reservation-based system and there isn't, um, dedicated like open play times. And, you know, it makes it hard for casual players to, to walk in, to step in and to join in at times. And I've experienced that and I know other people have as well. So just the idea here or the proposal is just to create dedicated open time, open play time slots. Um, start really simple, have like morning, afternoon and evening, two-hour slots. That way, you, once it's established, then you can start talking about, um, bringing on like intermediate ladies' open play or men's intermediate play or, or other special type events. So bottom line is just by implementing three small, you know, changes, we can improve safety, uh, simplify access with a user-friendly tool and a standard open play and really help build community through easy communication and, and more inclusiveness. Um, and if we agree to this, we can decide to form a small working group. There are members of the community that are very interested and willing to help out, um, and hash out a proposal. And then remember, someone brought this up earlier, the park is new. It's expected to go through, you know, growing pains and things that you have to work through. So iterate and improve. No solution's going to be perfect. You just have to try some things.
Thank you so much.
Anything else from my cohorts? If you're crying back here.
Thank you. We're always, we're always looking for new Recreation Committee members.
Official liaison, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Everything Bev said, are these your glasses?
If you could, uh, share your.
Diana Cohen, Fifteen Chart Road. Uh, I just want to echo everything Bev said. Ironwood Park is really just such a gem for this town and I appreciate everyone who has been part of planning and the work to create such a wonderful multi-function recreational asset for our community. I love the pickleball courts, except that border, that gravel border. But anyway, I am sad to say though, that I don't get to play on the courts as often as I would like. I find myself playing at Shady Lane in Nashua and Mackinacby Park in Drakot at least three days a week. Ironwood's pickleball courts are far superior to those courts. In fact, in Drakot, we have to assemble and disassemble the nets every time we play. So why am I going to play elsewhere? For two main reasons. Number one, it's too hard to find a cohort of players to play with here in Tingsborough. We're all sending emails back and forth, who's playing? Somebody didn't get a chance to respond. Some, and you get there and there's just two people and it's disappointing, so you go and sign up for where you know there are people playing. Um, number two, in the early evenings, the courts are not conducive to safe play. When I do play at Ironwood and people are walking by, they ask how to get started playing. They scan the QR code, but it says it's expired. When we tell them how to get to Ironwood Park signups on signup genius, they too have difficulty using it. This past Saturday morning, when I was playing in Drakot, I realized there were six of us from Tingsborough playing there. When I left, I drove by Ironwood Park and no one was playing there on our beautiful Sunday, on our beautiful courts on that beautiful Sunday, Saturday morning. Most often, there is a waitlist for scheduled playtimes in Drakot. Why? Because the coordinating of scheduled playtimes and levels is done on a better app and done by those who play pickleball. Here are my recommendations. Number one, the town Rec Department should set the basic rules for our courts. The most important one being that only those playing pickleball and only players, paddles and balls are allowed on the courts. I've observed speakers, music speakers, kids, drinks, chairs, observers, even a baby in a baby stroller on the courts. This is dangerous, but there are no rules posted telling them that this isn't allowed. So you can't blame them, you know, it's very, it's a very social game. But we need to be clear about what those rules are and we need to post them on each of those entry gates. No other town has its Rec Department coordinating the play on the courts. In all cases, the pickleball players coordinate themselves using Team. In all cases, the pickleball players coordinate themselves using Team Reach. Choose one volunteer resident who wants to lead this coordination using Team Reach. Post the Team Reach quote, code at the court so that everybody can join, and the Team Reach leader can then give other people who want to coordinate specific times and levels of play, they can give them the privilege, uh, the leadership privilege, and then they post their, they are, they're responsible for posting every week what those times are and communicating if, if the court's closed, or if there's some event going on. Pickleball is a fun, social, outdoor activity. I want more people to enjoy it. We are blessed with wonderful courts. If you let the pickleball players coordinate their use, we can expand this great sport to more and more residents. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open it up to the rec committee first.
I'll, I'll address it, thank you.
Thank you.
The rec committee has addressed these issues at two of their meetings. The first meeting, we had discussed what was known to us as issues or requests from pickleball players. It was on our agenda in the July meeting, and, um, the group had come up with a solution, still using signup genius. We are three months in, so we would have, the group decided that they would like to continue with our first season, sticking with what we had started with. There are rules for the pickleball courts, and there are three different levels of play on each of the courts. That was decided at the July meeting. So two are for, um, advanced play, one open, one social. The next one, uh, the two middle courts are for intermediate play. One, you can play round robin signup for, and the other is closed play, you bring your own group. And the last two, um, five and six are open play. You walk on, you paddle stack your next one in line. So there was a lot of consideration taken in the meeting by the committee. The next meeting, we were requested by the town manager's office to address the issues that we had discussed the meeting before. Specifically, more so to change the signup genius app to the Team Reach app. At that time, the committee, um, had already decided in the previous meeting that they wanted to wait until January to take a synopsis of what happened at Ironwood Park during the first five months of its existence and discuss everything in their January meeting. That gets us through Festival of Trees, it gets us through Block Party, and then we have an end of the season that we can address all of these issues. So it is in our minutes, it is posted that this is going to be discussed in January, so those that are interested in the pickleball specific, I guess, issue, I, we're, we would love for you to come and discuss it with us in January. That's when it is on the slate for it to be discussed. I've written down the issues that were just spoken of, and it will go on the agenda for the committee to discuss again. Our many, meetings are also open. You are welcome to just come and discuss with us at any time during our citizens' time, not specific to pickleball. Seems to be the hot topic, and that's great because we want our courts to be used just as much as Drakett's courts or Nashua's courts. So, we don't have you taking down nets, you can just come in and play. So, you know, please consider coming to us in January when we have our meeting, because that's when the feedback will be most important. It will go on our meeting minutes, and it will go on our agenda in January.
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah, there was extensive discussion, uh, planning, uh, not only the pickleball courts, but, but the entire rules and regulations of Ironwood Park, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Maybe, and, and part of the discussion that we may have in January is how to communicate those rules to the general public by posting them and whatnot, because, um, yeah, the items that were mentioned about music, and that's totally against what the plan was. So we need to, to make sure that that's one of the agenda items when we talk about, you know, next year. I, I do have a, a question, just in general. The, the park itself, am I, am I correct to say the park itself is kind of managed by the Recreation Department? Is that fair to say?
Uh, yeah.
Was that given to the Recreation Department to run?
So, the te, the town's bylaws don't speak to the Recreation Committee, funny enough, so I'm not even sure what the original establishment was. The land was, sometimes land is taken, and at town meeting, the vote, and the select board's vote when they take the deed, it's specifically given to, say, the Conservation Commission. That's largely around open space. In this case, the land was taken by the Select Board, deed restricted for open space and recreation, but neither the vote at town meeting nor the vote by the Select Board said it was given to the rec committee. The rec committee has traditionally overseen parks in Tingsborough. Ultimately, all land not deeded to the school committee or the Conservation Commission is under the general auspices of the Select Board, which operates through various committees. I guess that's kind of a roundabout way to say that legally, the deed is to the Select Board as the CEOs of the town, understanding that the rec committee, similar to Wicca Sea, similar to, um, any of the other fields, has traditionally managed them. And I think that's why the original set of rules was adopted first by the rec committee and then sent to the Select Board for final approval.
And as far as rec, how about the Recreation Department? Like Allison, is she the manager of what happens and goes to you all for approval? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and as far as budget, does anything come out of the Recreation budget for that park?
Certainly not out of the rec revolving fund, I don't think. That was never something we discussed. Whether or not the operating budget supports it, I'm not totally sure, but it would totally be wrong to use the rec revolving fund for Ironwood, or the public buildings revolving fund, because we're not putting in the revenue.
Right.
Into it.
Yeah, I just wanted to get my, everything all aligned.
Yeah.
Um, but, for my, for, next comment, um, I actually, as, it, there's a lot of different amenities there. I, I like the idea of, of considering, I think we all are considering moving in January to a different signup thing, but.
Yeah.
It's just nothing we talked about in detail yet. But I, I would recommend keep it underneath the Recreation Department, because there's, there's no reason to have pickleball.
Another committee.
Different than basketball, or disc golf, or bocce, or, or horseshoes, or whatever it might be. That way, at least, it's consistent under one umbrella, and as people change, things happen, you know, it, it has longevity. That's my two cents.
And on the committee, we have different liaisons for different areas, uh, and I think this could be the same. We, you know, we have somebody on the committee who is an avid pickleball player.
Yeah.
Already, so I think we could, you know, although it's, it's nice to have people want to be involved, so. We always want more people involved in the rec committee, so that, that's always good.
Also, the board may not be aware, but, uh, we've already started prepping for Festival of Trees, even though it's September.
Right.
So, I mean, that was one of the considerations of not taking on that project until the end of the season, when we thought we'd look at the whole thing. Would have Festival of Trees behind us, and we would have the time to devote to it, without.
Look at the new app and develop it a little bit further.
Exactly.
The schedule and see how things, I mean, we're all open to using, uh, something that is a little bit smoother and user-friendly, you know? Definitely open to that.
It was just tabled until our January meeting. And then we would look at everything again, because it's so new, and, uh, we had already gone through a process with subcommittees to look at all the rules and, and everything. So, we wanted to follow through for the moment with that, as Allison already said.
Yeah, and me, as a committee member, I, I don't feel comfortable sharing with pickleball members, I don't know who the members are or whatnot, but I mean, I think, I think it should stay within one group, uh, even though it may already be set up, and it's all you need to do a flip a switch, but I, I think that the committee put a lot of time and effort into where we are now.
I say, come join us then and come clean the basement with us. Come put some ornaments away, you know, come, come do some other things. That's what I say.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it to Stacy for remarks.
Hi, Stacy Guido. Sorry, I know everybody wants to go home, me included. Um, just really quick, because you, you brought up Wicca Sea, and, um, there's actually a lot of confusion about Wicca Sea, especially in my household. We don't actually know who takes care of Wicca Sea. Um, in my household, I would say our family does. So, um, my husband is actually on the agenda, Stephen Guido. I don't know if we're going to actually get to him tonight.
We'll get there.
Anybody who, um, is involved with Tingsborough baseball for, um, the kids in town, and I specifically mean the coaches, um, Mr. Eldridge, Mr. Culver, um, the men that I've actually seen show up at the fields. My husband, we are the ones that are there, um, taking care of the fields, weeding the fields, um, sometimes emptying the garbage. We clean the bathrooms, we resupply the toilet paper, we are not allowed to use the snack shack. We fix, the Tingsborough baseball pays to fix the plumbing. My husband, as I'm sure the two gentlemen who I see before me are there on the weekends or before games, taking down hornet's nests in the dugouts before games so that the kids are safe. My son has done the weeding and the wrecking. Um, we do the repairs. So I just want to keep, not tonight, because we've been here a long time, but that might be something that needs to be discussed at some point. Who actually, um, is responsible for Wicca Sea and who is taking care of it? Because I'm not sure that people know that, and, and, and we don't mind volunteering, because honestly, w- we're in it for the kids, but we're in it for like coaching the kids, um, having the kids play baseball. Private citizens, it can be difficult, like Easter Sunday, after we're done celebrating, to be at Wicca Sea pulling weeds, um, and emptying garbage cans, and taking care of hornet's nests, and cleaning bathrooms. And we're kind of told that it's our responsibility, it's no longer under the rec department. So there is a little bit of confusion there about whose responsibility that is, so that's just something that might need to be cleared up at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. I'm going to turn to the Select Board. Select person Coughlin, any thoughts that you'd want to share? Remember where we are.
Yeah.
Select person Cohane.
So, I mean, I understand you're busy, um, and I understand when you have a big, uh, your big projects that you have in town, uh, that's what you focus on in your meetings. Uh, we understand that. But please also understand that I have received twenty, thirty, forty complaints about pickleball. And I don't feel comfortable going to the residents and saying, wait till January and we'll take care of that. I've, I've had, I've had the same complaint for three months now, and I can't address it, and then they ask me, well, who is responsible for that? I said, we're trying to work with the rec committee. Uh, we knew the block party was coming up. We have received so many complaints, and I've seen so many issues at the pickleball court, safety. I hope you talked about that at the last meeting. There's glass containers there, I've got kids running around, um, I have people telling me they're playing at Drakett because it's just too dangerous to play at Ironwood Park, pickleball. People are bringing kids, not only the kids are going on the court, uh, they are actually bringing playthings for them to go on the court, and then they're running around behind people as they're playing. There's so many backpacks there, uh, that is, somebody's going to trip on it. Now, I played rec basketball for years, I got, I got hurt many times, and now I went to the fire, so I didn't need an ambulance to get there, uh, but I sprained ankles and fingers and back problems and everything else. And it's just, it's, it's, it's going to happen, and I just can't sit here and just go like, let's wait till Ja, or tell the residents that are telling me this, wait till January and we'll deal with it. I just want, can I, can I?
I'd like to.
You can't talk till he's done.
Can I, can I just, pardon?
Well, he, he, let, he has, let him, you have the floor, pardon me.
Well, everybody has, should have a chance to talk, right?
Of course.
So, you, you just can't keep going to the same court and know there's going to be a problem and just go, well, we'll deal with it in January. This is a problem. I thought we were going to address it at the last, your, your last meeting. The reason, just so you know, um, when I keep going to Colin and telling him, it's the same argument, same argument, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. There's, there's one court where there's ten people that show, ten, ten people that show up and they just hang there. They hang on the nets, they hang here, and there's, there are no rules except for how to play pickleball. The policies of who is supposed to be on the court, what you're supposed to bring on the court is not there. And these are the same, the, all, all Colin really did with, with this, uh, you know, he sent you some, uh, sample policies, uh, you know, for, for court play. All he really did is look at all the surrounding communities around us. They all have basically the same rules. You have pickleball player, you have a paddle, and some people have a water bottle, and that's it. Everything else goes out of the court. If you look at the, the backpacks people have, and you, I pickleball backpacks, they have a little clip. It's on the outside of the fence. Everything needs to be outside of the fence. If you leave everything in the fence, we're just setting ourselves up for some injury, and knowing that all the other pickleball courts, this is how it happens, we're, we're liable too. And I have a few other things I'll say, but I'll, I, I want to hear a comment and understand how we could at least address.
Now, my comment is though.
I've seen a no, 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 but I don't understand why.
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, no, outside of the, the, just because I don't, I've, I've heard from a friend that in Drakett, they have issues too. I just heard that the other night, that she said that they have, a friend that plays there all the time, says they have issues too. But do they, I don't know, because I don't play, but do they have somebody monitoring it? I guess that's my, do they, do they monitor it?
Thank you for the question.
Yep.
So after you have the basic policies and the basic policies on the fence, and it's very clear what the policies are, pickleball players manage it. I haven't really heard an argument that, you know, I really want to bring something on the court, or, you know, anything that's, that's, that's on the policy, they, they just enforce it pretty easily. Once you get used to it, and those are the same rules that all the other pickleball courts around us, it's all the same rules. A few minor changes, but they're really all the same. So the reason residents are really getting pissed, let me just put it bluntly, is that they can see what works in all the other communities around us, and we're just sitting there going, I'm not telling them wait till January, I wanted to discuss it. I need to change, I, I think we should change it. I, people don't want to go on the Tingsborough pickleball courts. The people that I know that played pickleball before Ironwood was there, they're all playing on other courts right now, because they see the problems and they're afraid, and they don't want to, they don't want to see anything happen.
My thought is, do you think that people who are playing will say something to other people that they see aren't following the rules though? Will they?
Yes.
I mean.
What, then why haven't they?
Yeah.
Why haven't they?
They're not.
They'll, they'll police it in Drakett, but they won't police it in town?
So there's, there's, there's no policies about what you can bring on the court and not bring on the court.
Okay, well, that's, that's pickleball etiquette in general.
And I thought we had signs. I thought we have policies.
So can I take that? So can I take that?
I'm going to turn it to select person Cohane to answer that.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions there, so I'm trying to figure out which ones, what was specifically the question, so I have that one.
No, I just, I wanted to know how we would enforce it, if we were to enforce it ourselves.
Well, the thing is, once you have the basic policy up there, the basic policy really is, when you play pickleball, you go on the court, your paddle goes on the court, and some people like the water bottle to go on the court, but some people don't. That's it. You play two games, and then, well, you play a game, if you lose, you're out. If you've played two games, you're out. But that policy has to be on, on, on the fence, right? It has to be on the fence that you can't have anything else in the pickleball court, which is, which has been, it's been dangerous. All you got to do is just go there any night and just look at what's happening. People have, people are hanging out with chairs.
Do you think it's the younger generation? Are we going to have to set rules on ages, or?
No, no. I, I play with people that are eighty years old, in Drakett, I play with people that are, that are twenty years old. What we tried to do is just, well, I know how you set it up, so you have competitive recreational and open play, so that's the way it was set up. I asked Colin, you know, we, we work on it to, together. He got a whole bunch of rules and regulations. It's self-regulating. Once you just, the simple policies that we sent to you last time, if you had this, you know, on, right on the fence, we'll make sure that everybody, everybody follows it, because once it's posted, it becomes very simple to. Because once it's posted, it becomes very simple to implement.
So, just simply post the policies that, that would solve the problem?
Pardon me?
Just simply posting the policies on the fence would solve the problem?
The policies and, and, and the pickleball and the, the team reach, to kind of, you know, the team reach will help also. Because, you know, like you talked about with competitive recreational, instead of having each person reserve a site, what you do is, you have two sites at once, so instead of six people, you can have, you know, up to 12 people. And what that does is, because you're rotating around, people aren't able to bring their, bring their backpacks and everything else on the court and think that they own that court for that period of time.
Yeah, we looked at the team reach on the last meeting, we actually looked at it, and it does look very good, it just, we weren't prepared to make any changes at that point.
All right, I'm going to round out this conversation.
I got a, I got a quick question on the signage.
You were going to be the last talk on this.
You say, so you say, in, in Drakeett, they obey the rules. Nashville, they obey the rules. So, who are the people coming to Tingsborough that don't obey the rules? Are they different people? Where they're coming from? So, you say everybody comes to Tingsborough who doesn't obey rules. So, if they post signs and they don't obey the rules, they look at the signs and say, we're not going to obey them. Do we call the pickleball police?
So, can I take that?
You may, and then we're going to be done with pickleball. Go ahead.
Thank you. Best comment I heard all night on pickleball.
I, I want, I want to, I want you to respond first, go ahead, sorry.
So, Ed, can please recreational committee. It's just been a problem that's been compounding, right? Well, the last time we went to you when we did this, when you see glass containers, food, bikes, chairs, music speakers, rollerblades, scooters, skateboards, everything is inside the fence, there's no policy, there's no rules about that. The only rules that are there is how to play pickleball. Those, those, those rules are not there. Once they're there, if anybody brings something on, you can say, these are the rules, they're posted on the fence, you have to be respectful. And that's the way it works in all the communities around us. And this is why people are getting upset, because they, they know it works, it's worked everywhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Cohane, if I could actually just, thank you. So, this is a rousing discussion and absolutely warrants more time and thought. I think this wasn't part of the agenda of this part of the meeting, it was really just the presentation about ironwood that Colin was presenting. And we did open it up for public comment, and we heard from folks that feel passionately about pickleball because that's the way that they use ironwood primarily. Also, we know that select person Cohane is one of those people, so I wanted to honor that. I think it is clear that this requires some thoughtful attention and should be posted on another agenda where folks that want to talk about pickleball are going to do that. That being said, I recognize that the stance at least a few minutes ago was that this is not going to be considered until January by the rec committee. Ultimately, I leave that to you all to decide if it's going to come up again before January. I think that select person Cohane has advocated for the discussion to come up sooner than that. But ultimately, that is absolutely the jurisdiction of the rec committee to decide your agenda, so.
Chair, can I, can I make a, because I haven't, I've been sitting here patiently.
You got something about pickleball?
No, I have something about safety, because I think.
Go ahead.
I think that there's, there's a wide variety of things, and it sounds like there was some agreement that we have some policies around safety. If we could just focus in on a one-pager that's laminated around safety and we can put it, I'll, I'll go through and zip tie myself. Just put those on there to say, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do relative to safety. If we could just do that, we, I think we all agree, I didn't hear anybody vehemently disagreeing that, hey, we shouldn't put, we've got the, the policies and we said this is what it is, post them. Now, enforcement and all those types of things, I think that's a more complicated type of item, I think which application we use. But can we just agree that we've got the, the policy, a one-pager, laminate it, put it in a bunch of different places as you walk into the thing and zip tie it, and let's try it? Let's, I don't want to wait till January for something like that, let's just come up with a quick way. I like to focus in on the things we agree on, and I, I saw a lot of heads nodding on that one and say, that seems like a simple one. I don't want, I don't want anybody getting tripping and falling, I don't want a little kid getting run over. Can we at least get a little bit better? That, that's all I would advocate we do.
Thank you, select person Eldridge. Colin, did you have something that you wanted to respond?
I have nothing.
Never mind. The last word to select person Cohane.
So, the last word is, this is a discussion about Ironwood Park. Pickleball is part of Ironwood. So, if, if we walk out of here without any, at least, safety, put something about safety out on the courts and something happens, I'm, I'm concerned. I think we have every right to talk about pickleball. Colin spent the time to look at a lot of policies for all, a lot of other towns, and he put something in front of the rec committee, and it's, it's on a piece of paper right now. We could put it right up on the, on the screen. And, you know, I don't know when your next meeting is, but waiting till Wednesday.
Send it to me, I'll send it to you.
Waiting till Wednesday, I don't know when your next meeting is or whatever, but, you know, this part hopefully is going to be open, weather, depending on the weather, till at least November, the pickleball courts. So, you're talking about another two months where we have a situation that's getting worse and worse and worse. Because everybody thinks they can bring something on that court and there's no restrictions, there's no policies. And it's up to this board and the committee, you know, what they want to do, but to walk out of here and not say that this has to be addressed, I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Cohane. Is there a specific proposal that you would like to see? Are you entertaining?
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
I said I had nothing else, but I do have something. So, if, if it's, to Mr. Eldridge's point, it seems like there was consensus about what should be on the court and the safety piece of this. This section right here, it's very short, pickleball court rules, this only addresses the rules of the courts. Only players are allowed on the court, spectators must watch from outside the fence. Please only bring your paddle, ball, and water onto the court, leave all other belongings, including bags, extra clothing, et cetera, outside of the fence. It goes on to list glass containers, food, bikes, chairs, music speakers, rollerblades, scooters, skateboards are prohibited. And to ensure others have time to play, please only play during the time slot you signed up for. Of course, that excludes open play. If, if the general consensus is what Mr. Eldridge suggested, that we should just post these rules, a simple vote of the select board, preferably with the recommendation of the rec committee, we could get these, that middle section, those rules posted very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would turn to the rec committee and ask if someone would like to entertain a motion about such proposal.
Or if they have any changes they would like to make.
Send it to me and I will have it on Allison's desk tomorrow.
Can I, I'd like to address it if I can please. I, I think because this was not on the agenda and the committee has not discussed this for this meeting, I would ask for the respect of just letting us take back to our meeting on October 8th, we can add it back in and discuss the safety concern of it, and then come back to you with the short blurb for safety concerns and then do with what you like at that point when your next meeting is. But I don't think that we want to quickly just jump into what's here, because maybe it's not addressing everything and now we're just, we're redoing the wheel again.
Yeah, I agree with you.
If we could just have a moment as a committee to go over the rules, look elsewhere. I understand that this was, time was taken to, to do this, but I don't maybe think that the minds of the rec committee, everything may not be listed there, or there may be too much listed there. I would like to ask for at least one meeting with the rec committee before we agree to anything. Thank you.
Mr. Cohane?
I'll, I'll just go back, I mean, they, they, the pickleball court rules were there at your last meeting, you had, you had this document. So, you have had time to look at it. This can be changed sometime in the future. But basically, all this is saying is, you have a pickleball player, their paddle, and the water goes on the court. That's all this is saying. Everything else, please get it off the court, let's get sa, let's make safety first. That's, that's all this really says. It goes through details of things you're not supposed to do, but it just says pickleball player, paddle, and water. That's all this belongs on the court.
I will leave it up to the chair and the committee if they would like to discuss a vote.
Yeah, I, I hear what he's saying and I hear what we're saying, and.
The overall park rules say there's no glass containers allowed in the park.
Yeah, we already know those rules established in our.
No motorized vehicles are allowed, and they're not even supposed to be in the park, never mind on the pickleball court. So, that's unfortunate that that's happening, so.
There's a lot of things happening in the court that aren't supposed to be happening. I think what they're saying is that we could do a condensed rule that could blanket the entire park. We could come up with something that, in general, could cover everything, right, Allison? That would be more, instead of just the pickleball court too.
We, we do have that, but they are asking for specific rules for the pickleball courts, the six courts is what they're asking for.
Well, you know.
Chair, can I, one more?
One more thing.
I mean, it, you can't say food, bikes, chairs, music speakers, rollerblades, and scooters aren't allowed in the park. That's what's here. And I, I don't, you know, maybe if you just want to say only players allowed on the court with their paddle and water bottle, that's all this is saying, I, I don't, you know, I don't want to walk out of here, have somebody get hurt and say, oh, well, we were waiting again. It's already been three months since I've had the same complaint over and over and over again. So, I'm just asking that you think about this for a second, and, you know, it's, it's a very simple rule. And it will solve a serious problem.
Thank you, select person Cohane. Select person Coughlin, I'm going to give you another opportunity, just because we've gone through a few rounds. Any other comments or questions about this? All right, perfect. I do feel strongly that you have the jurisdiction of your call and what you are charged with. So, if you do not want to entertain this right now and you want to save it for your next meeting, I, I believe that you have the right to do that. I think we likewise could theoretically change the rule right now because we do have the jurisdiction to do that. I would certainly discourage that because we do look to the rec committee for guidance in these things. But perhaps I'll, I'll give you a moment to decide, is it definite you're going to hold it till the next October meeting?
So, what is stopping?
I haven't heard a motion otherwise.
Rec department, what is stopping us from saying nothing but the player, your paddle, and a ball on the court? Everything else is excluded at this point. I make, I move to make a motion that.
I agree, just something simple.
We post that only player, your paddle, and your ball are allowed on court. Everything else needs to be kept outside the fence. How that's, that's it. That's my motion. Player, ball, paddle.
And this is as a temporary sign, that's what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I don't think we needed that complicated.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
I'm thinking we're just, I think it's just simple. The player, the ball, and the paddle are the only thing allowed on the court. Everything else is excluded.
Then at our meeting, we can discuss further what restrictions.
No water? No water, everything, every, everything else is excluded on the court.
So, you're making a motion that the player, the ball, and the paddle are allowed?
The fence isn't that high that you can't hang your bag over, that you can't reach out of your water bag.
Yep.
I agree. Well, maybe Mike can, he's a little. He picks up.
That's terrible. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Mike's second, but any discussion?
I'm surprised that this discussion is having it as a select board meeting.
Well, we're, we're a dual meeting, so.
So am I. It shouldn't, you guys have more things, more important things to do and discuss than pickleball.
Than public safety, I would disagree.
So, there's a motion on the table?
I'm going to interject, there's a motion on the table, we shouldn't be interrupting that. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Okay, all those in favor? I'm going to take a handful. All those opposed?
Feel free to change it in the October 8th meeting.
And then for the select board, is there a motion to be entertained to make the rule change based on the recommendation from the rec committee?
I, I move that we approve, accept the change and have the rules posted on the pickleball courts at this time.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0. Thank you for finding the topic right there.
Would you like to do the rec committee appointment while you're here?
I'd love to do that. I would like to move to new business 6C, the rec committee appointment while you're here, and then we will get you all out of here.
I am pleased to inform you that the recreation director, Allison Page, has forwarded a recommendation and a notice of interest from Stephen Guido to serve as a member of the recreation committee. Mr. Guido has been a dedicated coach for the youth basketball program for many years and is looking forward to taking the role of coordinator of this program through the recreation committee. He is an active member of various youth programs. Ms. Page states he will be a valuable asset to the committee.
Thank you so much. Any discussion?
I've known Steve for a while, I think he'd be a fantastic addition, I'm glad that he is stepping up in yet another role. So, I think he'd be a fantastic addition to the.
He's already weeding the grass.
And then some, for sure.
Thank you, I'm going to go straight into entertaining a motion.
I move that the select board appoint Stephen Guido as a member of the recreation committee effective immediately through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Any further discussion from the select board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0. Thank you. If you would like to adjourn your rec committee meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye, both.
Thank you so much for being with us, I'm sorry that you're leaving now with the tone that you are, the exhaustion is in your voice. Next time will be different. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, I'll give you all a moment to clear out.
I've got it.
You good?
Yep. We're back to town.
Would it be amenable to the board if we could skip to select board reports? Because I know that there are many people.
We saw the town manager report and we still have the.
Do we have to do select board reports after those two?
Well, so. It won't take. There's only one other topic. Well, you've got to ratify the contract and the town manager.
I'm just trying to free the people. But if we, if we don't, I'm happy to do it in the order of the agenda.
You are the chair, you get to decide what you would like to do, but we are not adjourning after the select board reports.
Oh, no, no, no. I would suggest that, I want the people to leave so that way we.
Got it.
You know, okay. In the interest of freeing you all, I would like to recommend that we move the select board reports up. Any objection?
I guess you set the agenda.
I set the agenda, okey dokey. I'm, I'm happy to start, because that's what you're here for, so let me just pull up what I'm just going to say. Certainly, I wrote this statement before hearing from residents. So, before I would even consider posting this online, which I think is certainly what is being asked of me, I probably will take into consideration the things that people shared today, and I, I will probably modify this a little bit. But this is how I was feeling coming into this meeting, so bear with me. Some of you may have seen a recent Facebook post of mine that's been circulating. I understand that some people have been bothered and concerned by it, and so I want to address that impact directly. From the beginning of my service on the select board, my goal has been to lead with thoughtfulness, impartiality, and empathy. That's why I decided to run in the first place. I had intentional, personal conversations with many of you, including some who called for my resignation this evening. You invited me into your homes. We shared tea and conversation in your kitchens, in your dining rooms, in your living rooms. We agreed that even if we didn't share political parties, we would likely still agree on the majority of issues that impact our town and residents. Above all, you placed your. Above all, you placed your trust in me to remain fair, and that commitment continues to guide me in every decision I make. I know that words can sometimes land differently than we intend. What I want to be clear about is this. My focus has always been and will remain serving our entire community with respect and care. It was never my intention to cause pain, and I understand that some were hurt by what I shared. Trust is built and rebuilt through dialogue, and I welcome conversations with any resident who wants to share their perspective. I'm grateful that so many residents came out tonight to make their voices heard. Social media is rarely the place for nuanced, two-way conversation, and I have no doubt, looking back, that this topic would have benefited from face-to-face discussion. That being said, I want the entire community that I am honored to serve hear directly from me and know what I stand for. Charlie Kirk was a victim of the sickening gun violence that plagues this country. He did not deserve this injustice, and my heart is broken for his family. At the same time, it's impossible to ignore that his public commentary caused harm to LGBTQIA+ people and others whose lives were often the subject of his debates. For me and for many others, grief is complicated when legacies are complicated. In the past week, what we have experienced as a community together here in Tingsborough has played out on the national stage as well. People have spoken about how Mr. Kirk's commentary in the many years before his murder have impacted them and then faced backlash. In my case, in addition to calls for my resignation, I have been on the receiving end of derogatory comments, slurs, increasingly aggressive harassment, and even threats. For the first time, I have questioned my safety in the town I call home, something that I would never wish any of my fellow residents experience. As a queer and transgender person, I cannot separate myself from a political climate where my rights and the rights of people like me are constantly debated. But I entered public service because I believe deeply in this country and in this community. And I believe every family deserves to feel safe, families like the Kirks and families like mine. Like you, I long for a time when violence is no longer part of our lived experience. People, families, and communities are experiencing the impact of this loss in many different ways. I believe that being honest and open about how the actions of public figures impact our lives is a path towards healing. These discussions are not easy, but I feel that they are necessary. The discussions can also be made easier when approached with an open mind and open heart, as I know many here in town would agree. I know some in our community strongly disagree with me. I think we saw that tonight, and I respect that. I invite that disagreement. Should I decide for, to run for reelection, I understand that I will be judged at the ballot box for my words and my actions. That democratic process and the diversity of thought is the greatest strength of this country and of Tingsborough. The five members of this Select Board each bring our own perspectives and lived experiences. We deliberate publicly, challenge each other openly, and vote independently. My commitment remains the same as it was when I started my service on the Select Board, that within my role as Select Person, I will serve my fellow citizens with thoughtfulness, impartiality, and empathy. I will continue to use my time in office to fight for every citizen, including those who call for my resignation, those experiencing the same insecurities that I am feeling today, and those who aren't quite sure but are just hoping for a kinder tomorrow. Thank you. You're, you're free to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I understand that that's what maybe people were here for, so. Select, all right, all right. Order, order. I'm going to use the gavel. Select Person Coughlin, do you want to go next?
This opportunity to thank everybody who did come out and express their concerns, their support, you know, it just shows that everybody's very passionate about their town, right? Like, the good citizen of the, of the town. I think, too, as a Select, I'm the newest member of the Select Board, and I think as Select Board members that we should hold ourselves with a certain decorum and certain standards. And, you know, I, I think, too, that, that when I did read that, I, I was a little troubled, but nothing personal or anything like that. But, you know, just, I, I think my concern was that, like, what happened in the country, like, came into our little town, right? So that kind of bothered me slightly, but I can say that in, in the short months that I've been working here, and I considered, consider Jackie a colleague, and will continue in that vein. But it is, again, I know we all have free speech, but it does come at your peril, so you have to just really consider that as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Select Person Coughlin. Select Person Cohane, your Select Board report?
Select Person Gilfus, thank you for your open, very respectful comments and very, and heartfelt comments. We've worked together for a while, and, you know, with what you said is, I know it was sincere. You know, what happened here tonight, I guess we'll say, was a great example of a, of a debate that we had. I want to thank everybody for participating. This, this exchange that we had tonight is exactly what the founders of our country had in mind, when they guaranteed freedom of speech in the First Amendment of the Constitution. It may not be, it can be ugly, and sometimes it is, but that's the way it is. I wouldn't want to go the other way and not have my feet. Our ability to speak freely, to listen, to debate, even when we disagree, like tonight, is what strengthens our democracy in the long term. What we experienced tonight was a real example of the freedom of speech that we've been guaranteed, and we experienced this in Tingsborough tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Select Person Cohane. Select Person Aldridge?
Yeah, I kind of wish I had seen what other people were going to say, because I might have taken some of those things, or some great comments by folks. I really appreciate the respectful dialogue that was there. Wasn't sure, but it really restored my faith in the town and the people in the town to have that discussion. I, I normally hate discussing anything about things that are on a national level here in, in Select Board meetings, because we really don't have a lot, it's, it's out of our purview almost. However, there are times when our role as people elected to look out for the best interests of town, that, that these things creep in, and I, and I think that our role in this is to help ratchet things down. You know, the temperatures are really high, and, and I think that some of the rhetoric that was there, we, we need to set an example for that. But I like numbers. Everybody knows I like numbers, and I'm going to start with a couple of numbers. I'm going to start with one, which is the First Amendment. It was a first in the Bill of Rights for a reason. You know, our freedom of speech is pretty wide-ranging. This notion that elected officials cannot have an opinion if a portion of the community disagree with it, disagree with it, is really hard for me to wrap my, my head around. You know, aren't elected officials supposed to have opinions that we compare our beliefs to, measure up with what their opponents believe, and then we vote based on that criteria? Maybe some people just think it's purely based on a letter next to the name, but that's not what I do. If we tried to remove from office everyone, you know, without an election, all elected officials who have an opinion that differs from even a large number of people, I guess we probably wouldn't have many elected officials left at any level, and certainly none that desire any changes. The other number which kind of hit home this week i- is two. It's the Second Amendment. I'll start by saying I believe in the Second Amendment. However, you know, I would love to say that recent events have shown that the impact of gun violence to us all is, is new, but it's not. It's not getting better either. Some statistics from the CDC, in 20, in 2022, more than half of firearm-related deaths were suicides. More than four out of every 10 were firearm homicides. Firearms have been the leading cause of death for young people aged 1 through 17 for the last four years, surpassing car crashes, overdoses, and cancer, all things that we talk about all the time. And you know what the worst thing about those stats is for me? We become somewhat numb to them. This is not a left or a right issue. This is not one side being immune to followers who take up gun violence to further their supposed cause. Gun violence doesn't care left or right. We have people who have mental health issues across all ideological lines, and we have people on all sides with no morality to understand that murder is not right. This is a problem that exists in states with lax gun laws and those with strict gun laws. It's not an easy fix, right? I wish it was. There's a lot of facets to it, but I think it's important for all of us to work together because we, we know it's not working. I don't know the fixes for the problem. If I did, I wouldn't even be here. I'd be doing something really good with, with that information. But I do think we can do one thing here in our small town, and I think today was a little bit of a step towards that, and this is where I tie everything together. I'm doing it. We need to be able to speak our individual truths, disagree with mutual respect, find common ground. You heard me say that earlier. Can we just find out where we have common ground, and let's go through and do that? And find that common ground even when we're talking about some of the complex but important problems. And here's what I ask for Tingsborough residents: When you're engaging in discussions in person or online, forget about what the other person looks like and that they might be different from you. Understand that their opinions may be very different from yours, but they deserve to be treated with dignity. Let's do it without name-calling, because I think we are well beyond insults. Treat everyone as a human. Maybe starting there in this small town gets us headed in the right direction instead of widening the division. Thank you.
Thank you, Select Person Aldridge. I would like for us to move to new business 6B and ratify your contract before we hear your report. Is that okay?
I have to apologize to the people at home that have been waiting for my Town Manager's report, but they can watch, they can listen to it as a podcast, so. All right. During executive session on September 8th, which I did not participate in, the Select Board reviewed and approved a successor employment agreement for my position for the period of time beginning on July 1st, 2026.
I'll give you a break.
Thank you.
You know, if you wanted to Town Manager's report, we could have just dropped this whole contract forever, too, you know? You know, that was always an option, but, you know, we'll, we'll proceed here. So, yeah, so we had a very good conversation, Select Person Gilfus and I. We went through this contract with Colin. You know, Colin's been our Town Manager, believe it or not, now for three years this spring. Went, Colin? Colin, Colin, thank you for that, by the way. Colin came to us as somebody that had never been in this role before. Now he's had just about three years' experience. Colin's been very fair with his contract, with his first contract and with this one. And he continually said, we talked about what was fair for Tingsborough. And he, he kept mentioning that over and over again. Colin is somebody that really loves this job, and I believe he really does want to stay here. And everybody I've heard from the community, even people that may not agree with the Select Board at all times, they still like Colin. Go figure. And so what we did is, you know, what we always do with these contracts was we look at all contracts in surrounding communities. We went through that. We looked at where Colin was compared to those, and I believe we came up with a, a good contract for Colin that he was happy with, I think the residents will be happy with, and realizing that he even reduced his contract the first year, 2027, this upcoming year, because he realized how difficult this contract year is going to be. Kind of shows you who Colin is, to be able to do that. But here's the final numbers that we came up with that we felt was fair and honest for Colin and this community. So for 2027, the base salary would be up to $176,000. 2028, $183,000, and 2029, $192,000. What we also realized, what Colin, Colin pointed out to us, is everybody, you know, that works for the town gets longevity as a full-time employee. For some reason, we left that out of Colin's last contract, and as you know, he had a little hiatus, and he's left us for a few months. We, we, we got him to come back, but he did not have credit for those years. So we pulled that credit back into Colin, so all the years that he's worked here, he does get credit for, for longevity. One of the things that we were very adamant about in his first contract was paying for performance. We thought it was very important to do that, and, you know, it wasn't just meeting expectations, it was exceeding expectations. And we were always demanding and asking for Colin to exceed expectations. And everything, everybody I've talked to and her, you know, talked to and people that have worked with him, you know, he, he's like the Energizer Bunny. He never stops. He just keeps going, right? And that's what we've come to expect from Colin. So we've actually taken his performance incentive. We'll give him 3%. That's an annual performance incentive. Based on everything that we've given him, we do an assessment of how he's done, and if he exceeds expectations, he gets 3% of, based, from his base pay, 3% over his base pay, a one-time, a one-time payment. In other towns, if you really look at what's been going on, there has been a few instances where a Select Board or a new Select Board decides that they don't want the Town Manager, and they just fire him outright. There's a provision in the, his, his original contract, if that happens, he gets six months severance package. We've increased that to a nine-month severance package for, if we get rid of, if we get rid of Colin with no justification, basically is what that is, right? And that is in line with other contracts. Other contracts for Town Managers is usually nine to 12 months, but he, he wanted an increase, but he wanted to be cognizant of doing the, the lower increase, which was nine months. And that basically is the contract changes that we put in place for him, and I hope that Colin is here for that full three years and many years after that.
Thank you so much, Select Person Cohane. Any discussion? I would like to entertain a motion.
I was going to say something nice about Colin, but it's not his performance review anyway, so we'll just go through with the motion.
That's perfect.
I move that the Select Board ratify the contract with Town Manager Colin Loyzelle for the fiscal years 2027 through 2029.
Second.
All, would you like discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Colin.
Congratulations, Colin.
This is such a treat. We don't usually have an audience, so this is great.
Especially not for this part of the meeting.
Usually, it's just us talking to ourselves. And you get to celebrate your new contract by giving us your report as the closing item in this meeting.
Wow, that is fantastic. Thank you. And thank you to the Board for your continued support. I do just want to start by acknowledging the awful tragedy that took place over the weekend in Nashua. weekend in Nashville at Sky Meadow Country Club. I also want to thank the Tingsborough Police Department and our regional partners for their prompt response to ensure that our neighborhoods that were bordering the area were secured. Before I even spoke to Chief Woods, the on-duty shift commander had reassigned units to make sure that areas like Danforth Road, 440 Middle Sex were covered. We promptly sent out a reverse 911 alert to residents to let them know that we believed that there was a second suspect on the loose and quickly sent out an all-clear notice once it became clear that there was only one suspect. It is a timely reminder that if you haven't yet, you can sign up for our reverse 911 alerts at tingsborrome.gov. It's a relatively straightforward process, but certainly if residents have a hard time, our office can enroll you. If you've enrolled yourself, though, you have to un-enroll yourself. We can't go in and change your account. We get that sometimes when people move out of town. But really, you should sign up. We use it primarily for emergency alerts or really big notifications, and in a situation like what we saw over the weekend, I think being able to send that alert out, particularly at 9 o'clock on a Saturday, was very helpful. I want to thank our Health Department, especially our public health nurse, Ashley Pavlakos, for coordinating last week's Light the Night opioid vigil in the town center. It was a wonderful tribute and a moving reminder of the impact that the opioid crisis has had on communities like ours across the nation. National Grid will be hosting in-person support office hours here in Tingsborough on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our local customer service advocate will be at the Center for Active Living and will be available to answer questions about bills, payment programs, assist with enrollment in those programs, and much more. There's no sign up required. All you have to do is show up and get your answers, your questions answered. This is the first time that National Grid has offered this to Tingsborough. This board is acutely aware that we've kind of increased the pressure, if you will, on them to be more responsive, so no question too big or too small. This customer service advocate, who is assigned to Tingsborough, so we'll be able to directly follow up with you as opposed to calling the 1-800 number and waiting. I'm also excited to announce that in the coming days, we're launching a new digital calendar for events at the Center for Active Living. This calendar will allow residents to sign up for alerts anytime an event is added, modified, or canceled. It will also show on the homepage of tingsborrome.gov and directly on the Council on Aging's page on the town's website. This idea came out of the last Council on Aging meeting, which I attended, and it moves... It's another step in the direction they're looking to go with being more accessible, changing the way people think of the center. And so I'm really excited about this. It's going to operate the same way that our calendar alerts for meetings operate, so you can sign up when the Select Board posts an agenda or the school committee, and it'll really allow us to give real-time information. In the winter, if it's snowing and we close the center, we try to do robo-calls to people who have previously participated, but if you never participate in the event before, we don't have you in the list, so now you'll get an email and not waste your time coming out. An update on the demolition of 180 Lakeview Ave. Speaking of National Grid, they have finally cut the gas connection to the former Council on Aging building. That's the last step that we needed in order to get the abatement and demolition started. I expect to have a new schedule from SNR, which is our contractor this week, and I'll keep the board appraised. But residents should expect to start seeing construction equipment show up at the site as well as fencing around the building in the coming days. Again, as we've said from the beginning, we are preserving access to the softball fields and a majority of the parking lots, so there shouldn't be much of an impact to the rec And then just a handful of reminders about upcoming events. The Council on Aging is hosting Bingo again. Their next installment of Bingo is this Wednesday. Doors open at 5:30, and the game starts promptly at 6:30 p.m. The Fall Health and Safety Fair will take place on Saturday, September 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tingsborough Elementary School. The Tingsborough Public Library will host a community walk at Ironwood Park on Monday, September 29th, 2025, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. This promises to be a lovely way to celebrate Good Neighbor Days and take a stroll through our beautiful park. The annual Friends of the Tingsborough Public Library book sale will take place on October 4th, 2025, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., right here in the community room. You can donate books to the library for the book sale through October 2nd. The Sustainability Committee, the Tingsborough Public Library, and the Tingsborough Dunstable Rotary will host a Repair Cafe on Saturday, October 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at The Beehive, which is located at Two Bridgeview Circle. Volunteers will help you repair your electronics, clothing, jewelry, bicycles, lamps, sewing machines, and much more. Anything that you can't repair there can go to Zero Waste Day most likely on November 1st, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Our website in the next couple of days will have a full list of all the things that are accepted. And the Tingsborough Public Library is planning an Oral History Day on Saturday, February 21st, 2026, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the library to collect oral histories related to the Winslow School. They'll be releasing more details in the coming months, but save the date. The Oral History of Winslow School project was funded by the Community Preservation Committee and approved by town meeting this last fall. And then one last-minute addition: We will do our annual all-staff training on November 19th. So we will open the town hall, the library, and the Center for Active Living at 11:00 a.m. This is going to be our third year doing it, and we're grateful to the library trustees for supporting it. We start the morning with all of our staff, and we cover general topics. We always have a different theme, and I'm not ready to announce it. And then at 11:00, staff go back, we open the buildings, and we spend an additional hour, hour and a half, with department heads doing kind of bigger-picture goal-setting, leadership training, and the like. It's been very well-received. I think the first year, we were nervous that people might not buy into it, because it was the first time, but we've seen everybody comes to it. Every year, people get more enthusiastic about it, and so grateful to this board for the support, the trustees, and all of our staff that participate, and to the residents for understanding.
A couple of quick updates from me. My truck fundraiser did not make the report this time, so maybe we'll add that for next time. Last week, the Fire Headquarters Designer Selection Committee met with three finalist firms to provide a schematic design for new fire department headquarters. The committee consisted of myself, Select Person Cohane, DPW Superintendent Swicker, and then Fire Chief Russell and Assistant Chief Sands. The committee has made its recommendation to Town Manager Loizell, which will now proceed to the negotiation phase and hopefully the awarding of a contract in short order. We expect those negotiations to take place this week, with design process kicking off in the next couple of weeks in all likelihood. And then finally, touching on budget discussions that we had earlier today and that had not started yet, on that topic, next week, the Capital Asset Management Committee will begin capital planning for the fiscal year '27 capital budget. The first meeting will be at 6:30 at Tingsborough High School in the PDC room and will be available, like this meeting, on YouTube and on the town's website. And that's it for me.
Discussion or questions? Select Person Coughlin?
None at this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
A couple of items. So Colin, the Fall Health and Safety Fair is Saturday from 10 to 1.
The Merits?
At the elementary school, so it's earlier. It starts earlier. We have a special presentation at 11:00, but it's 10 to 1. And at the same time, at the elementary school in the gymnasium, there's a Red Cross blood drive. I encourage people to sign up. I need to do that, but other than that, I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Motion.
I was...
I know she had to say something.
No, I don't, I don't... There's nothing left to say. Our next meeting will be October 6th. I look forward to seeing you all there. We may have a meeting on October 22nd. It's tentative. I don't know why. Is that because we may or may not have a Fall Town meeting? Is that the idea?
Correct.
We'll roll with it. I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Good night. Thanks for being here.